Maybe that thing, well, I didn't update or something. It's not.
Oh, no, I just want to make it aware.
Winston Henry, I'll do.
I did.
Yeah, sorry, but there was probably the link on the website, so you're in there now, so we're good. Right. Certain leader feels for the implication of remain standing for the pledge.
Father, we just come to you and give you thanks for the city and the people here to make the decisions for Wise Council. We thank you for our police and the fire department and all the things that's on the agenda tonight that we could discuss and come together for the better for each other and our law enforcement and the equipment they might need. We thank you for the funds for that, then it'll be brought up and that you could help us have the budget to be able to have the equipment to better our law enforcement as well as those who first responders in any area. So we just want to give you thanks, we want to give you honor and praise, and we, as we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we ask for the wisdom in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Matt Clark, everyone, please.
Mayor John Eric Hoover.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chris Mayer.
Here.
Councilman David Mueller.
Here.
Councilman Robert Hubbard.
Here.
Councilwoman Lisa Burke.
Here.
City Attorney Nancy Meyer.
Here.
City Manager Andrew Butterfield.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, first up, just a real quick diversion. There was some comments made during the last meeting that there was some stuff on social media and stuff going around, and I wanted to give Vice Mayor Mayor opportunity to address those comments, so Vice Mayor, if you.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last council meeting, I had used an ethnic, I called that one ethnicity on four or five different times, and if at any time that came apart across as a negative or disparager in anyone whatsoever, I truly do want to help the community here, the city residents and those who live here and call this their home, and I just want to say I am sorry. And if there was any way it came across inappropriate, I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
I appreciate that, Chris.
Thank you.
And I'll just add to that, I know it's got twisted around, there was a, there was an individual, we had some hearings about tearing property down, very difficult decision from a council, to do that to anybody, I want to make it abundantly clear that the, there is never a time or place to have any sort of prejudice towards any ethnicity, and I can assure you from myself and the rest of my colleagues up here is that there was no decision making where that was clouded by any kind of ethnic background at all. Every case is put together on its merits, and we've got to make tough decisions based on that. It did, I can see where some of the public heard some of the comments afterwards and tried to tie that in, but I want to make that perfectly clear that we don't, we don't make decisions along those lines. We take the details that we have in front of us and we make, we make decisions based on that, nothing else. I don't see any, any color, any background when I look at the podium, it's, we're all here together, we're all equal, and that's the way we apply the law up here. So I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed because I didn't want that, that negative spin on that to have any merit at all because it's false. So I appreciate your apology and comments for that, Chris, and honestly, it's tough as we get up here and we're, you know, we're on camera and we're passionate about things, and I want to go back to Chris's comments, you know, if you, if you watch the comments, the concern was is that how can we protect folks from having these issues in the future? Because we don't want to get somebody to come into the city, buy a property unaware, and end up, you know, putting money in that property and in effect losing it because it's done outside the guidelines, city permitting process and what. On the same side of that, I want something good to come of this, and I know we brought that up, and this was kind of the, the reason that Chris was bringing these comments forward is what can we do as a city to prevent this from happening to anybody, right? And I believe there's a lien process that when, when properties change hands, they reach out to the city. I don't know if you had time to think about it or not, Nancy, but when we get those requests in from the city about is there any active liens or whatever, are we able to, from a legal standpoint, go ahead and say regardless of whether the form asked for it or not, by the way, this house has been, has been deemed substantially damaged and is in a slump of life process or whatever information we have?
I was not asked to look at this, like, no, I don't, I don't have the answer to that. I know that conversation occurred, but I wasn't asked to look at it, so I'm happy to do so.
Is there any objection to her looking in, because I would like going forward that, yeah, that when we get notified about a property changing hands, I want to give every bit of information regardless of what's asked for or not, I want to give every bit of information we have to make sure that people are making good solid financial decisions. So and that's, that was really the conversation that was being had, what it's talked about. So thank you for that again, and if we could move forward and make that a positive thing.
We need a motion on that.
No, it's by consensus. So look, we'll discuss that, obviously policies we go forward, but it's something we can hopefully improve upon. I apologize for getting off the topic there, but I wanted to address that. We have no proclamations, we have one set of minutes from May 13th, 2025, looking for a motion.
Got an issue.
Okay.
I believe the Vice Mayor would have been Chris Mayer, not Linda Rodriguez.
I apologize.
I mean, if you just do a search or replace on that, I think you're good.
Yeah, the, the template from the older meeting still had Linda, so when I put them in there, I just didn't change it when I went back through there, so I'll correct that.
Is that the only thing, so?
That's the only thing that I noticed.
You want a motion to approve of that change?
Sure. Motion to approve the changes of Chris Mayer as the Vice Mayor and removing Linda Rodriguez as the Vice Mayor for the minutes of, was it 5:22 or 5:13?
Their second? Okay, motion second, any further discussion? All favor six five is saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is comments from the general public, I do have a few signed up, we'll start with Keith Brewer, welcome. And we come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and since some of y'all are due, I'll go ahead and read this real quick. Public participation is encouraged, if you're addressing the council, step to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please limit your general comments to three minutes. For comments on action items, please limit comments to three minutes on the current topic. Please limit your conversations while sitting in the audience during council business and silence your cell phones so as not to interfere with everyone's ability to hear the comments of both the public and the council during that time. Is that yours, sir?
Yes, sir. Afternoon, my name is Keith Brewer, the owner of Epic Health and Fitness, 6652 Ridge Road, just across the street from here. I wanted to talk a little bit about, first off, thank you Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Wanted to come here, I was invited to talk about what we can do within the community that we're trying to do now. Our phone number, if anybody's interested, because we do give free workouts for the first time that you come in, is 727-264-6033. I am a retired Army Vet, military police, a retired Army civilian, anti-terrorism force protection, so I lived this world that you guys are doing now and I appreciate your help. Our, our epic is one of several within a franchise, and our motto is real gym, real results. We also add in real families and real results because we believe in it's a family approach. We're an 18,000 square foot facility that has memberships that include Epic Plus, Epic Corporate, which is your first responders, fire, police, nurses, doctors, anybody that is a medical support person, and also my brothers and sisters and any type of law enforcement or military, we make sure that we get you an Epic Corporation because we appreciate your assistance. We also have a minor Epic contract where if we could go down to age 14, we allow children, they have to be with their parent at 14, but from 15 to 17, we allow them to be on the floor, and we just make sure that they meet the state law of the curfews of 10:00 at night and 06:00 in the morning before they can enter into the facility. We offer a wide range of insurance that we accept, including Silver Sneakers, Silver and Fit, ASH, Universa, and this is not an exhaustive list, there are many others that we work real hard to make sure that we can get you in and be a part of our family. Some of our amenities include, number one, we're a 24/7 access. The most important thing that I tell people besides it being a large facility with a lot of great equipment is we do something that's called an Epic Start. When we do that, we're going to interview, set you down, and we're going to start a benchmark for you so that you could see every month how you're doing. With that Epic Start, at the end of that, we're going to give you a three 30-day meal plan, or as we call it, our macros, we're going to give you a free 30-day exercise plan based off of what you told us you'd really like to do. The other amenities that are in this is also personal training, that is an outside cost, but currently, and I will honor, is that we are doing 20% off of our personal training now because a lot of people are getting ready to get back to school, and it's hot, if you're not in shape for this heat, it's just going to drain you. The other additional amenities, we've got the Siatsu Gravity Chairs, the Zero G, and if you've never sat in a Zero G chair, you've never felt your heartbeat right, it's a very good thing to be involved with. We have a unisex dry sauna, also important for anybody with family. We have childcare that is from 8:00 to 12:00 in the morning, Monday through Friday, and also from 4:00 PM until 8:00 PM at night. That is $15 for two kids, one-time payment for the month. If it goes above that, it's an additional five if you have three, so we keep that price low because we want the families to be in there, we want them to know that their kids are being taken care of.
Yeah, Keith, the time expired, how much more you got?
I was just going to tell you that we, we do the access, we do the free exercise, we just wanted to let you know that we're a family facility, also the Vice Mayor here is one of our members, and we do appreciate giving me the opportunity to talk about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate coming. Next up, I have Danny Fields, welcome.
My name is Danny Fields, my address is 8114 Lille Kid.
Normally, you're first on the list, he beat you to the punch today.
Well, I went ahead and told him he could sign first.
That's nice of you, he's bigger.
And helped him a long way, so I'm grateful for, for him coming here, bringing, you know, health and unity and willing to, you know, give discounts for people and get us to think about working together in a community, it's a good business, this is the kind of stuff that I like to partner with as well, I'm plugging in him now, but that's okay. That's what I talk about when we come together to see what's out there, promote good business, things that are good for us, our families, our communities, it brings in revenue, and he's, he's stepping up right in that area, so thank you, Chris, for encouraging him to come. So now to the stuff that I got to talk about, tomorrow at 8114 Lille Kid, Light of the World Tabernacle at 12 o'clock, we're going to have a back-to-school backpack stuffing party, we're going to have pizza, it's a free event, we, we got that for getting ready for the event at Waterfront Park, and so at noon time tomorrow, we'll be doing that, we'll probably spend a couple hours, we'll have four or 500 backpacks supplied by the, the community around to get the kids back in school with all the supplies in it. So on July the 26th, which will be this coming Saturday, from 8:00 to 2:00, we'll be at Waterfront Park, the time will be from 10:00 to 12:00 for the pickups, for the stuff, we're going to have food, fun and games, come and join us, it's free, the police will be there, the fire department, we're having Christian motorcycles cooking and serving, we're going to have chips and hot dogs and stuff like that, and food and popcorn, and then, of course, we network, and this is where the, all the people in the city and the faith-based church and those in the government work together to pour back into our community to be bringing public awareness and work together as a team. So I just want to thank you guys for all that you do, and we could continue to just do things to better each other, and this is a place where we're growing, you know, you hear people say, you know, "Port Ritchie ain't on the map." Well, I tell you, with, with this council and the mayor and you guys, what you're doing, we're starting to get recognized for the events that we're doing out there at Waterfront Park and 100 Years of Celebration and things like this, we're on the right track for development, redevelopment, and for good businesses and communication, and we see that we're getting our equipment to, and revenues to come in to, to work, and you guys are just doing a good job, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Danny.
In Jesus' name, blessings.
Last up, I have Anna Maria Rodriguez, welcome. Is she here?
Yeah.
Welcome.
Good evening, Council people, can you hear me okay?
Name, name and address for the record.
Okay, oh, all righty then, it's ironic that I'm here this evening, I only took a look at the agenda.
Yeah, just the name and address for the record.
That's right.
No problem.
My name is Anna Maria Rodriguez, my address is Florida, USA, I'm a United States citizen, and as I was saying, it was ironic that I came today when I saw the agenda on all the efforts that you're making to increase the abilities of the police department. I have a question, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions, but if anybody wants to respond, because you're all here, has, has the subject of bodyborne cameras come up?
I'll go ahead and respond, so this is generally a question-answer session, but obviously, I'm happy to answer that, we're actually going to talk about it in our upcoming budget that is one of requests to purchase those, so those, those will probably be here in the department very, very soon, I would imagine.
Yeah, I think I read on the state's Department of Justice site, there might be some funds available to help municipalities as well with that.
Okay.
I am not 100% correct. And my other statement, I'll keep it just brief, congratulations to your new position, and I'd like to remind everyone that we took an oath today, and I will need to come sometime in August into the police department to turn in two complaints. I will be recording my interaction with you, and I just need all of your blessing, I will be as polite as I am here with you today, but I would just like to go ahead and exercise my First Amendment right since unfortunately I haven't been able to feel comfortable, so basically this is for everyone's best interest, and I hope I don't have any problem doing that. Thank you. That's all I need to say, good luck with everything, I'm so glad that the city of Port Ritchie is growing and growing in a really super sunny way, thank you.
Yep, thank you. That's all the folks that have signed up, by show of hands, anyone else that can speak? Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public comment. And bring back some comments from the city manager, I'll pass it to Mr. Butterfield for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank the council for the, making the time for the budget workshop this afternoon, appreciate your guidance and questions, and we'll come back, I just wanted to figure out when the second workshop should be, and I can get with, get with y'all later, and I can propose a date, but I would think, just give us a couple weeks to make some changes, but, but enough time before the tentatively four September first budget read.
What's, so when's the?
Sometime in August, I was going to suggest, you have a council meeting on August 12th, which you want to, we can do it similarly if it's helpful to line them up on the same day, so you're only coming in once.
I would, I would suggest not the 12th, I'm trying to schedule a board of adjustment at one.
Oh, that's right.
Do, do you guys want to try to do it before then, either on the 5th?
Out the whole week of the 4th through the 8th.
So we got, we got next to today 29th, is that too early?
No, I think we, we get the CIP, and that was the main focus, the CIP, and then CRA, I guess it could be at the same meeting.
CRA will be August 12th, during the CRA meeting.
During the CRA meeting, so we have three meetings lined up for the 12th already, okay, so, okay.
29th, you want to have it normal time, 6:00 PM, or you want to do it earlier?
Early clock.
You want to do 3:00? Does that work for everybody? Is that next week, Tuesday?
If you don't care, it's better for the staff.
Yeah. Bob, is 3:00 on 29th, I know you, you'll be somewhere in an RV, but.
We'll keep that as a tentative, I'll bet everybody.
If it doesn't work for Bob, listen.
Okay, well, so that give us enough time for any notifications, okay. Okay, all right, thanks. If you've seen a team of people driving or walking around town, the wave, wave finding firm is out assessing our signage and things, so that's an exciting new thing to give us a fresh look and make sure we've got fresh eyes looking at visitors coming in and knowing where to go, so that's a work in progress, but they were in the building meeting with some of us on the team this morning and finished today a two-day visit to the city. I think it was, might have been covered before, but on 15 July, the County Commission approved the dispatch changeover plan, and I know Chief Reggero's already attended at least one meeting with the county and they're working out a development plan, so we'll keep you posted on when that switch over is going to be complete, but it's in works, I'm sure it'll be before the end of the FYR, Richie.
Definitely should be, and me and Fire Chief Gary have a meeting with them again on Monday, this coming Monday, so we'll make sure you're aware when that's happening. Also regarding the police department, looks like they're in the running for an award, Chief, could you speak to that, you're going to head over Orlando this week for? Yeah, so we've been selected from the Florida Department of Transportation for initiative in the enhanced law enforcement engagement traffic program, basically they, we applied for a grant from them, they gave us money to go out there on the state highways, which is US 19, and there's certain areas that are high crash areas to try to reduce the amount of fatalities, serious body injury accidents, and for the last year, we've been doing that on a regular basis to where our initiative has gained us the, sort of an award as a top three in the state of Florida, and on Friday, we'll be going to Orlando to receive our award, and they'll tell us whether we finish first, second or third.
Thank you. And Chief Gary, you guys just attained ALS certification for the first time in the city?
We received the official letter of acceptance from the state Department of Health, accepting us as an ALS agency, we received our official license for the agency itself, which will be proudly posted here at City Hall and at the fire station, and then we just received the sticker, which is the license that goes on the actual apparatus, that licenses the apparatus as an advanced life support paramedic unit, so all that's left now is for us to pick a date and go live.
Fantastic, thank you so much. As the citizen just said, making the city a little better every day and every way we can, so, and then I think there were some questions about Bay Boulevard, but I believe the punch is complete, Sal, can you confirm, we think the striping is where it's supposed to be?
The only thing we're waiting on is Darryl has to confirm the striping so we can do the thermal overlays on the striping, so I know that they were talking about where the lines actually are set now and going by the center of the pavement as opposed to, because I know how, when you went out with him, there was differences in measure, but from what Darryl told me, I had to follow back up with him, is that it was, it basically goes by the center line of the pavement than the center line of the lines, so that's why there's some measurements that change differently because they're following the center of the asphalt itself, not, not the lines, they don't follow the lines, so some is going to look wider than others.
When you say the center of the pavement, when, when I was measuring, I was measuring to the center line, and from the new pavement on the edge to the center line, that's where the discrepancies were, so there's, there's, I mean, sometimes it's more than a foot wider on one side, and I can tell you, it's visually off in some, and you can actually see as you, like, get past, as you go down Bay Boulevard, you can see one particular place where the lines actually veer to the left and then continue on where it makes it even more of an adjustment to that, so the northbound, north lanes are wider, and instead of the bridge, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't understand the methodology for.
And that's why Darryl's waiting for, because we asked the same question to Mike, well, visually it doesn't.
Yeah, and it was, and the whole pavement was taken into consideration, so I don't know what you mean by the center line of pavement.
That's what they were telling us, is that they go by the center line of pavement.
Center line where the pavement used to be, because center line of pavement now is awesome different.
I go, they're supposed to be providing this documentation from DOT on how they, how they lay the lines, but I, I told Darryl, I said we have to, you know, I don't want to pay for the thermal until we actually come, come up to a conclusion on this, so we're still, we still haven't come to a conclusion on when we're going to put the thermal down, but that's the last, but that's the last thing we're waiting on.
I'd almost, before we make the decision with him, I'd like to have the conversation, be involved in that as well, because I don't, I'm not taking that excuse, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense.
No, well, that's like I said, and I'm, I'm waiting on him to provide me, he's supposed to be getting documentation from the striping company, because they, they found that out to do that, that was non-AJAX themselves, and I said, well, whatever, I need to see us, we can't move forward until this is, you know, this is either corrected, or you could prove that it's supposed to look that way, because it doesn't, it looks off, so.
And I can tell you, as you, as you drive it, obviously, and we've, we've now got those reflectors that are on, so you got a double yellow line that goes all the way down to center, and you've got reflectors on the outside of that yellow line, in the back of the lane, so you're always driving over reflectors and you do da, 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 as you go down the road, and as with the lane, with larger trucks and stuff like that, it's, I mean, I'm pitting all the time in mine, especially on the one side, so it's, it's an issue, we also found there was some, some pavement issues for some pitting or whatever that Darryl was concerned about.
They're supposed to be correcting those.
Of course, that's different.
They had no problem with those on the punch-out list, and they were already making, making those corrections.
Yeah, okay.
Those corrections should be made, it's the striping that we're having, we're bumping heads on.
I'd almost have somebody representative come out so we can actually take them down and show them what our concern is and have them show us what they're talking about.
I think we'll set up a field meeting so we can all sit out there and, you know, they can explain to us, so.
Many dollars we're spending, I'm sure it's right.
Can't close the books on me yet, but I know you're getting questions, so we'll, we'll stay on that. The Grand Boulevard project, we're making some progress there, we're looking to piggyback a contract off of either Penniles Park or Zephyr Hills, we both use this firm that our planner Tammy's recommended we look at, so. The guidance on that, I'm looking, looking for guidance on how much of an effort and what the timeframe is, if I talk to this person and they wonder how far out are we, making progress on that, if you have any idea how, what will the?
Honestly, I'd like to see that done before the end of the year, if possible, I don't know what the rest council thinks, but I know that's kind of what I've been telling people that have been asking, because they, obviously, they want that golf cart approved, and that's going to be a process after we actually do the, the changes, so, you know, we need to, we need to get that done so we can get that in, in the process with DOT to prove. That being said, I.
That's on track.
Yeah.
And it's the peripheral study to, about beautifying and overall on Grand Boulevard.
Right.
So.
So, oh, you're talking about piggyback kind of for the, the planning thing?
Yes, yeah.
So the Grand Boulevard intersection, were you not talking about that specifically at one point?
Well, I think they, they, they're looking at the whole.
Well, let's don't lump those two together, I guess, so the Grand Boulevard intersection is a separate thing from our planning session along Grand Boulevard, coming up to the intersection. Right, we, we've got, obviously, engineering and stuff that's done to add additional lanes on both sides so that we can get that approved for golf cart crossing, so that's one thing, and that's what I want to see actually moved along, potentially by the end of the year if we get that done. So where does that stand?
The plans, the plans are done, I don't have the permit, and I need the permit to go out for RFP, so.
And it's, is it sitting in DOT still?
Yes.
And how long has it been there?
It's been several weeks, so.
Okay, if you would send me an email with how long, when you requested it or whatever, I'll forward that on the secretary. And see if we can get some open on that. But that, so you're talking about piggybacking the contract on that too?
No, no, about designing a master plan for the.
Yeah, I was going to say, if that was the case, I don't, I don't know if that's something we would necessarily piggyback with. We probably need to put that out to bid for that intersection. But the other thing, obviously, yeah.
Okay. I will obviously work on that and.
But I guess given that's a bid, we have to have the permit done, correct? On the, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you send me that tomorrow, I'll forward that on to Justin.
And then they've got us penciled in if we can get the dredging paperwork signed. They've got us penciled in to do the seagrass study. That's the one real critical to get done before the end of September. So as long as we keep moving forward on that, we should really get that study done, maybe even in August at the latest of hours. That's all.
Okay, was there any, I know we talked last meeting about possibly adding more to that.
Yeah, we sent them some info about a couple of more canals to add and that'll change the scope and probably add some money. So once Matt has that added up, then we'll probably.
More to come on that.
At the next council meeting, yes.
Okay.
As long as the intent is good, I can keep them, keep our spot on the stage.
Absolutely.
Just kind of taking the temperature here that we're still good with that.
Yep.
That's all.
Thank you. Okay, next up, comments from boards committees. I'll start. The Centennial Committee met our final meeting and went over the, the, all the budget items and stuff. And we're rolling over, and it was seven thousand eight hundred or seven thousand two hundred or something, I think. A little over seven thousand dollars. And I wanted to make sure council was okay with this methodology. What we thought from the committee perspective is, obviously, we're creating an event committee for the city and we take that seven thousand dollars and keep that in that committee as we build on that to put on several more events. So basically, starting out money as opposed to just letting it roll back into the general fund. Is there any objections to that?
You're going to put, so where's the cash now?
It's sitting in the general fund, right? Or wherever.
Yeah, it says it's a general fund, I'll put it in a restricted fund.
So they create a strict fund for events.
Okay, I just want to make sure it was recorded somewhere.
Yeah, and so he's.
Not somebody's pocket, right?
Right, no, it's, it's going to be, so we're starting out with seven thousand some dollars. Obviously, there'll be fundraising and stuff for different events and all that, but we're starting out with seven and the finance director didn't get to keep any of that.
I ain't keeping nothing.
So that was, that was what the committee thought was a good use of that. And obviously, the money was donated to the city for the purpose of Centennial. Like I said, we've, we went through, we've, we've got plaques. Have those been ordered? Did we get that?
I'm waiting for the final, I have the final draft to stay done, but they got to send me the final bill with the stands. So that's just going to be a small adjustment.
Okay.
Still going to be close to about seven thousand. That we're going to have in excess.
So we've got for all our sponsors, we got a little, I think there's three sizes.
Yes.
We get to, the two big sponsors get the biggest plaque, then we got a medium sized one and then a small, they're done in a clear curling sheet with the logo and council members' names on it, committee names. It's really nice. I don't know if, can you pull it up? Did you, was it, was it, it was in our packet, wasn't it? I can, let me show that to you all just so you see it. Just a second. I should have had this ready. Here we go. Okay, accept your request. Okay, it's kind of small, but you see it has our Centennial logo there with our sincere appreciation. We may add some wording changes on this, but this is kind of the logistics of it. What's that?
Those changes were named.
Okay, so we may have some changes to the wording or whatever, but this kind of gives you an idea. Just thanks them for their donation, put what level, the turn of century sponsor, and then council members and committee members. And it was spelling and adjusted there and a little bit of change, I think, in the way it was presented. But that's pretty much what the plaque is like. And then you'll see that there's Honda and you'll see there's three sizes. You get the two large, medium, and then small ones. So. Any questions on, on that? Okay. That's pretty much it from the Centennial Committee. Obviously, we've got other stuff to do for the event committee. And that's actually a G N I item. But because we have a couple other committee potentials, I want to go ahead and cover that now. I had a, I had a conversation with a lady that Newport Ritchie is involved in their historic committee down there and with the, with the West Pasco Historic Society. And, and when we opened that up outside the city, she's very interested in doing that. Her name is Bevla Stevenson Corre. She sent me an email, I'll read it to you now. It's, Dear Old Mayor Hoover, hope all is great with you. I'm reaching out to you regarding a possible vacancy on your Port Ritchie Historic Preservation Committee. I would appreciate any information or application regarding this vacancy. My email is the one above and then her cell number and man address. And she lives at five seven one nine Lafayette Street, Newport Ritchie. So she wants to be on our Historic Preservation Committee. I'd like to see if I can get a motion to add her a second. And I think we, we need one more in order to have a quorum, I believe. So this would actually. We have three now?
We'll have three. We have Christine Sullivan, Matt Douglas, and this will be your third.
Right, so we need her for the.
We need her to have form.
So this, this way we can, our, our historic committee can get on.
Seven minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
That's motion second, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing that I put to the vote, all in favor, six, five, I'm saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. There, there is another board committee I want to talk about. Unfortunately, I haven't got an answer, but I reached out to Christine Sullivan. Let me give the backstory. So our Board of Adjustments is having some issues meeting quorum. I think we may be on track for having a meeting on the twelfth, but we have two positions on there that are unfilled, correct? We have five and we're having some issues with, with getting those, those in. And we've had an individual that's trying to get a, a hearing with the Board of Adjustment Board for like five months now. And the last one had to be canceled, which is unacceptable. So we need to, we need to make sure we have staffing for that board as, as variances request and stuff come in. So Christine, I've sent you a text. I don't know if, is that something you're interested in sitting on?
I didn't see it, but I'll take it.
If you, if you come up, just real quick.
Hi, Christine Sullivan, seventy eight oh eight Weber Lane.
So Christine serves on our Historic Preservation Committee and also the Citizens Advisory Committee. And I, I, in my mind, I thought she'd probably enjoyed this. Just to let you know, the, the background is this is a kind of ad hoc type board. They don't regularly meet unless there's a variance request or something in. You can't serve on one or more, one or more board in the city. So if, if you're interested, which I, I need some extra people on there to make sure we get quorum so we can actually have residents not have to wait for quorum. Are you good with that?
Can I talk about this outside of this meeting and get back with you on that? I really don't know.
So the only, the only thing, yes, you can. And the, we have to act as a council. And the, she's trying to set one up for the twelfth. And actually, we could possibly move it earlier if we had.
We can't based on city attorney's availability.
Oh, you're not available?
And notice from partner.
Okay, and there's, there's no, so that meeting would be before our council meeting on the. Okay, so if you wouldn't be able to sit in that meeting, but if we have it, it's okay, but so. Want some time to think about it?
Yeah, I really just don't.
Okay.
At the moment, so I'm going to.
Pressure.
Yeah, okay.
We'll deal with it, thank you. Don't go to the bathroom here. That's right. Don't go to the bathroom. I'm just trying to avoid a, another issue with that, so it's.
Hopefully, I should know by tomorrow based on what I got this evening if I have a quorum for the twelfth.
Let's just, if, if for some reason we find out tomorrow that we can't have that, let me know. I'll convene a special meeting to act on somebody so we get somebody on the board. I want, I want that meeting to happen, so. And if that's what we need to do, is there objections to that? We call special meeting to action, a committee position to fix that? Okay, thank you.
If you would just clarify one thing, maybe we can get through this. What do you mean I could only serve on one board? Would I have to give up one of my other?
No, no. So you can only serve on one board. You couldn't be on the planning and zoning board and the Board of Adjustments. You couldn't serve on council and another board, right? But that doesn't mean that whatever happens in the future, if you decide to run for election or whatever, that this could be temporary, long term, whatever. I just need somebody, I need a warm body that answers emails and responds to requests.
Okay, then I'll.
I would like you to follow the rules, but that's, you know.
Yeah, follow the rules.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't impact you in anything else.
Okay, and when is the meeting?
It would be the twelfth, right now is what they're saying.
Essentially, August twelfth at one o'clock.
Okay, I think we can do that.
Okay, can I get a motion to add Christine to? Okay, got motion from Dave, a second. Any, any further comment? Any audience comment? Seeing that I put a vote on favor, six, five, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Sorry, go ahead, Bob, say aye.
He said aye.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you. Opposed? Yeah, motion carries. Thank you. That'd be very helpful to make sure we have an extra person in the hopper for the twelfth.
I'll keep you updated, Christine, on what's going on moving forward with that meeting. You're welcome.
Okay. I think that's all I have from board committees. We do have a G N I item for the two, we'll get to that shortly. Any other board committee updates?
Are we talking about events?
Once we get there, we'll do that. That's the next event committee, it's on the agenda for those two. Okay. Can we move that up? Can we move that item number up and do it now? We could if you want. We, there's no rush. I mean, I got it. Okay, right here. Do you want to? We got Mike, obviously, Mike's waiting, so I don't want to keep him too long. He's a very important guy, so we get him out of here. He's got legislators to talk to, I'm sure. Okay, so that's all boards committees. Next up is consent agenda, looking for a motion and our discussion. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second. Okay, motion second, further discussion? Good, Dave?
Good.
Okay, any public comment? Seeing that I bring back for vote, all in favor, six, five, I'm saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is council business, item number three, briefing on Florida's twenty twenty five legislative session. I'll pass that to Mr. Butterfield for introduction.
Mr. Mayor, as you said, we're lucky to have former Board of County Commissioners for Pasco County and the Chair, Mr. Mike Moore, here today. He's been representing us in Tallahassee and brought good results. We asked him to come tonight and share on that open and probably help us get ready for next year, right, sir?
Yes, sir. Pull this mic up a little bit.
Mike, we appreciate you coming up.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Butterfield and Ms. Meyer and the team here at the city of Port Ritchie. It's a great day in Port Ritchie, isn't it? It's always a great day in.
Our better moments, for sure.
I will tell you, as most of you know, I did spend a little bit of time on the County Commission over the years here in Pasco County until, oh, thank you so much. No, I apologize, which this is forward and backwards. Thank you. And I've said this before and I've had a lot of conversations with the mayor and some other council people as well as, man, this, this city is cranking. I'll tell you what, you guys are doing an amazing job here in the city of Port Ritchie. Come a long way over the years and it's just, you've made this a place that people obviously love to live, work, and play in. Not like it always was, but this body in this room is a lot different today than it was so many years ago. So congratulations to each and every one of you for all the hard work you've done. And I know sitting on council isn't an easy job and it's basically a volunteer job for each of you, basically is. So kudos to each and every one of you for all the hard work and efforts that you put in to make this city a great place for not just the citizens but the visitors that come here as well. So with that, I will move on. We're here to talk about the twenty twenty five legislative session. Some of you had the opportunity to come to Tallahassee during session. So I will be speaking with the city manager in the coming weeks about a time that looks good for all of you possibly to attend the upcoming session as well. You know, when some of you were able to make it, and I know Councilman Hubbard, I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Hubbard, if I scared you off. You didn't want to attend today because I'd be here, but it was, it was good hearing your voice. But Councilman Hubbard was there and obviously Mayor Hoover and your former city manager were able to attend and they were able to, you know, come to our office at the Southern Group, which is about a block away from the Capitol. They also were able to spend some time with some of our fine legislators there in Tallahassee. Not just our local legislators, but some others as well. And I will, before I jump into this, recently, as you know, probably from reading Florida politics or just being on Twitter or social media, you saw that former Senator and Chair Blazengoglia was appointed by the governor to the CFO position. It was official Monday. I had the honor of attending the press conference last week where the governor announced that. So your former Senator, which had part of Pasco County, not your district, but close by, is now the Chief Financial Officer for the state of Florida. So in your area, he lives in Hernando, but you have two people in the cabinet now and Wilton Simpson as your Commissioner of Agriculture. And you have somebody else very close by as your CFO. So a lot of locality in your top leadership positions in the state of Florida. So a little, some session stats, nineteen hundred fifty one bills were filed this session. Two hundred and sixty nine bills passed both chambers, two hundred forty six bills were signed into law. And there was one point three million dollars in tax savings for families and businesses, which you'll see later in the tax package. You know, that's a lot of bills filed, not a lot passed. I mean, that's, that's the norm, right? A lot of bills are filed and don't make it to committee. And a lot of bills die in committee, some bills die on the floor and some bills get vetoed by the governor. That's what passed this year. Next slide, I'm used to saying next slide, I will do that, there we go.
You're on the.
Off of that, you know, I gotta.
Downtrack, Mike.
I am the next slide. State, some state budget highlights, and I might have to get a little closer because I can't read that myself. But this year we had a lower budget, the budget was a little bit lower. The governor legislature said we're going to scale back a little bit, which they did. So between the negotiations between the House and the Senate and what the governor signs, one hundred and fifteen point one billion dollar budget for the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. They also continue to put more dollars in reserves, which we always think is a good thing, which is fifteen point seven billion dollars. You always want to have money for the rainy days or depending on what the economy does in the future. Largest majority you see in there is healthcare behind that is education. And you can see with the, in the budget, what the other ones were as well.
If I can be good now, add a little color just for folks that don't know. So when the, when you have all the appropriation stuff that come in and they're going through the budget process, both the House comes out with their version, obviously, the governor has a version, as well as the Senate has a version. And when the first versions came out, I believe it was four billion dollars apart, the House and Senate.
So we're about four billion dollars apart.
So you can see as, as that process happens, there's a lot of horse trading stuff that happens, happened between the two chambers to come to this number. And I think this was somewhere in between.
Right, so the, I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head. The governor had his budget, that he, his proposed budget, and the House came in a little bit lower, the Senate came a little bit higher. And they finally, through the extended session that we had, and I was going to get to that as well. Okay, session did last a little bit longer this year. So your lobbyists and others, your legislators, spent more time in Tallahassee. You really got to know Tallahassee even more this year. So we spent an extra, you know, thirty days or so in Tallahassee during this process, but you're correct. You know, just like if you watch the federal government, you know, the House is going to have their budget, the Senate's going to have their budget, proposed budgets. Governor has theirs. Ultimately, the House and the Senate have to come up with a budget, it has to be voted on, and then it's sent to the governor for approval. But they were kind of, they were a little bit far off.
Yeah. I know when I heard.
That's about right, yeah. I think it was, ultimately, it was closer to five in the beginning. So let's talk about the fun stuff. So talk about appropriations. For those of you that aren't sure how this works, so typically, or this is how you did it, obviously, you come up with some appropriation requests that you would like to see for the city with your city manager and his team. And then with, and obviously with the blessing of council. So these are. So these are some items that we would possibly like to go for and try to see if we can get funding for from the state. Once you approve that list, give it to me, and then I approach our legislators and say, here are some items, here are some requested items. Now, obviously, I go through that process with you too, and I will, as I did, I say, maybe not a great thing to ask for. Maybe make a change, and let's remove that. So I advise you on what things I think would be good and bad as well. And then we go to our legislators. Now, locally here, thankfully, we have two amazing legislators. We have Chairman Ed Hooper, and I say chairman because he's the chairman of the Appropriations Committee for the Senate, and we have Chairman Brad Jaeger. He's the chairman in the, in the House under the, for the insurance subcommittee as well. So those are your sponsors for everything. Sometimes, you know, there may be some crossover in some cities and counties who have multiple legislators you might go ask for, but thankfully, we have two great legislators that were willing to put in for some of these projects. Once that, they accept that, your staff will fill out forms that will be submitted through the, through the members to staff. Those get published, and now we have to get to work even more. And when I say we get to work even more is there's a long process going through committee weeks in session to get those in the final budget and ultimately hopefully approved by the governor and not vetoed. You didn't have any projects vetoed by the governor, which was amazing. Some cities and counties got, had many projects vetoed, or all their projects vetoed, or had nothing in the budget at all, or more than you did either way. So during that process, the legislators and myself are also meeting with committee chairs. So you have appropriations chairs in committees that oversee like project, water projects, DEP. You have, and all yours pretty much, well, you also have the fire engine replacement too. So you have committee chairs in the House and the Senate. So they, that has to go through them as well. They have to okay it. They don't okay it, typically doesn't move much further until people get to work and, you know, and have those meetings with that committee chair to say, can you put that back in, please, during the process? You also have, sometimes you'll have in this, once the budget comes out, when the initial appropriations budget comes out, you might have something in the House side and not the Senate side. So now what we have to do is get the House to match the Senate or vice versa with these projects and going back and forth with these numbers. So it's a long process. We could talk about it for hours, but that's my job. Go ahead, Mayor.
And one, one important thing that's going along with that, so we had half of our fire engine on the House side, $400,000. And we had the full 800 on the Senate side, a full million, a full two and a half. So on the House side, we only had $400,000 for the fire truck. That was it. See, as the process worked, we ended up getting all three.
Correct. Still would have been very grateful for that number, but thankfully, in the end, it worked out and we got the full ask. And it's also meeting with the appropriations chairs, and it's, you know, having the conversations with the Senate President and his, and or his team, and the Speaker of the House and or his team. And then down the road, after this budget gets passed and it's sitting on the governor's desk, now we're still working with the governor's office to make sure these projects move forward. And also, for example, DEP. So we had our list of projects with DEP. Thankfully, our firm has relationships and knows a lot of agency heads and people in the agencies as well. So we give them our list, and I actually did a write-up on all your projects and why they should move forward and why, hopefully, why they would give a, a positive report to the governor's office on this should move, this should be approved or not approved as well. So it's not just like, hey, it's done, and you walk away. There's still work to be done if you want to see this get across the finish line. So $2.5 million, again, thankful for Chair Hooper and Chair Jaeger, replacing your asbestos cement and galvanized drinking water mains. Next project, again, Chair Hooper and Chair Jaeger, $1 million for your sanitary sewer lift stations, rehabilitations, and for our fine friends in fire rescue, $800,000. Again, Hooper and Jaeger for our fire engine replacement. Again, very grateful for all the efforts and work that our legislators and our sponsors did.
And those fire folks, they like to spend money, so this was a big win.
Look out. I, listen, I, I, I'll tell you what, you know, I, I, I love our, all our first responders, and it is a joy to be able to work on those projects as well. You know, had the honor of maybe representing a couple other people around here as well, and we did a couple other things in the fire world here in Pasco County over the last couple of years. So grateful for both of you and your teams, chief and, chief and chief.
Yeah, and so, so folks know, obviously, Ed Hooper comes from, from a fire background, right?
That he did.
So when we submitted these, I was, you know, I was very hopeful we would get to 800,000 for a fire truck. And I thought that'd probably be the one we get. So I could, I could tell you, I was pleasantly surprised to see some of these water funding projects come through. I really thought going in, we, we probably just would get to 800, which has been great. We've been more than happy with that, but.
I will say too, I mean, a lot of them got vetoed. Last year, a lot of fire projects got vetoed, and it wasn't anything negative. Sometimes in the past, in years past, sometimes it was thought of, hey, this should really be a county or city budget item. But more and more people are obviously realizing that sometimes, you know, these are big-ticket items that cities and counties, you know, where they have immediate need. They can't just always go out and fund those immediately, right? It's hard to bond things, right, over time, and sometimes you got to get a voter approval. It's a long process, so. Some budget highlights, and I don't think, let me, I didn't have a little trouble seeing my own, my own thing here. So some budget highlights, a lot of money went into, as you can see, it's affordable housing, transportation funding. I don't think you really, the small county outreach program, I don't think you, do you guys qualify for that?
Not aware.
Okay, well, there's money in that fund if you do qualify. Something to possibly look into. Ready-to-Work credential program. See a lot of money going into cybersecurity again. If you could, I keep saying next slide. I'll do next slide. Environment, resilience, geez, I'm having trouble reading that. Resilient Florida Planning Grant Program, 20 million. Drinking water facility construction loan program. That's something you'd probably qualify if you needed it. The wastewater treatment and stormwater management loan program, again, something you may, if you needed it, qualify for. Small county wastewater treatment grant program, United County, so it wouldn't matter. Tourism and economic development, and I'm going to go into this a little bit more later because tourism is important to you. You want to bring visitors to the city of Port Ritchie. You want to continue to bring visitors to Port Ritchie. Obviously, a few years ago, we were able to work on getting, as you know, scalping brought back to Pasco County. You see how many boats are out here right now, and how many people are going to your restaurants and, you know, and staying locally that are helping your, your local retailers out. It's very important. So there's been, you know, many instances in the past where they've tried to do away with Visit Florida. They've continued, again, to thankfully visit, visit Florida this year. Job growth grant fund, that's something too. We can always talk more about it. A lot of that goes to counties, but not saying a city can qualify for that as well.
I might just clarify. So on these, these budget numbers in here, these, these weren't appropriated for these things. These are, these appropriated that we got, actually go after this money. It's not like it's.
Some of these, a lot of these are grant money, but that's.
Available still.
It's part of the budget, yeah, that you could obviously.
Specific areas.
Correct. So I just want to highlight those, or if those are items or grants that you might want to look at going after, there's, that's, they've been funded again.
Okay, good.
Key legislation. So there's some items. I'm not going to get into 180, thank God. You have somebody that's going to do that after me.
Exactly.
I think I've worn myself out with 180, but, I mean, I could talk about it, but again, you have a great presentation. I reviewed it while I was sitting there. You guys are going to do a great job in a few minutes on 180. So I will pass that by because I don't want to steal your thunder. It's very important, and obviously, you know, there's a lot. And I notice Meyer has, oh, you're so amazing. I know. Usually I could see it, and allergies kicked in, and eyes are watering.
You probably do a lot of reading, so I'm sure.
I, I, I do. But 180, obviously, is something you need to have a discussion on, obviously, between your team members and, and Ms. Meyer and Mr. Butterfield. There's, there's implications, you know, that are, are part of that. And little things, some not little, big things like, and I'm not saying you would have one, but, you know, obviously, we know you were hit by a hurricane, right? It says, a lot of these stipulations with, if you're within a 100-mile landfall, well, you were ground zero.
Right.
So there's no getting out of it. You're going to have to follow this.
Yep.
That's the way it is. So, and when it comes to things like, you know, it's a two moratorium, you're not going to be able to do that, or raise impact remobility fees, you're not going to be able to do those things. Anything, you know, any type of regulations or any changes to comp plans that would make it more difficult to develop a property, you're not going to be able to do that. But I, again, I'm not going to steal the, your thunder.
He did it. We're good.
Local government land regulation, that is something I'm sure Ms. Meyer, maybe Mr. Butterfield as well, has taken a little, has looked at a little bit. There are some things that you really do need to be aware of in 1080. Can or will affect you as, as well. One of the things is modifies the threshold required to approve an impact fee from two-thirds to a unanimous vote of your council. If you decided to raise impact fees, can't be a two-thirds anymore, has to be unanimous moving forward. There are certain things that specifies if comprehensive plan amendments are not adopted at a second public hearing, amendments must be formally adopted within 180 days of the second public hearing where the amendments are withdrawn. So those are some things. If you do any updates to your comprehensive plan, or you have a developer or somebody coming in that wants to obviously amend the comprehensive plan, there are certain rules you must follow now that you previously did not have to follow. This is important for the, your, your folks in the development and permitting side as well. Within 30 days of receiving an application for the approval of a development permit order, a local government must review the application for completeness and either issue a written notification to the applicant indicating that all required information was submitted, or specify with particularity, providing any areas that are deficient. So, and for applications that do not require final action through your quasi judicial or a public hearing, the bill requires a local government to approve, either approve, approve it to conditions or deny the application within 120 days after they've deemed it complete. So you can't sit on an application, in other words. I'm not saying you guys ever would, but, you know, this is a result, and legislation typically is a result of the, things like that not being followed or not happening in certain municipalities or counties. So, and I can, I won't do that, but I can name probably the cities and counties and why this was moved forward. And it's not around here.
On the unanimous for the impact fees, does it specify unanimous of the council president, or is it actually unanimous of the, the current council?
Have to dig into that a little bit further. I don't know if it's going, listen, I always, I'm, I always say, talk to your account, or your city attorney. I'm, you know, obviously, my interpretation can be different. I'm more of a black and white person, right, whereas an attorney could have a, possibly, she does never, could have a different interpretation, possibly.
And I disagree a lot, that's why.
That's not true.
Okay. That, again, I, I don't, I'm not going to give advice on how you should follow. You have somebody to your, sitting to your left that's very good at that. Plating. I know, I don't know how much plating you do, but, you know, right now, you're, when it comes to plating, you're going to have a vote. It's going to be on your agenda. You're going to vote on it. No longer will you do that. That'll be administrative and administrative only. So your city manager would either take on that task or assign one of his team members to approve that administratively. So no longer, if there's any plaits from a development, you will not be approving those, or not approving those. Those will be approved, and they will be approved by your, by your staff.
Does that still go through planning and zoning, or? No, not at all?
No.
Which is just administrative now.
It's going to be administrative moving forward.
Interesting.
Now, I will say personally, this is me, you know, I think, we gotta go back to my past, and I didn't think there was a need for us to sit there and approve. No, they would go on consent. They could get pulled, but have to go through that long process when this hall been, development's been approved. That was me. I always thought it should be administrative. Well, now it is. And I could cite the area in the county that, why this legislation was written as well, and it's not local. Not Pasco County. Okay, some things that didn't pass are important. You know, there's a lot of bills, but I'd be here all night. Pass your 9 o'clock cutoff.
We extend it for you.
Your addendums. Right? 9 o'clock is the time now, right? All right. TDT funding changes. You probably saw there was a big battle when it comes to TDT funding, which could have had a large impact on what DMOs, your destimation management organizations could do in a county. Cities benefit, obviously, from a DMO or tourist, tourist development tax as well. So there was a lot of, there was a couple different bills out there, a few different bills, that would have made a lot of changes to the TDT. The thought from some of this was you could take TDT funding and not just use it for tourism, but you could use it for other things like road improvements, infrastructure improvement, things like that. There was other thoughts about it could be used to offset property taxes. So there, and there was also bills out there that basically just did away with it moving forward. There is another, some other ideas that, hey, if this county or the voters want to see this move forward, it's going to go to referendum, and they would vote to see if it continued, the TDT continued. Now, for those who know what a tourist development tax is, that's a base, it's the bed tax, right? So, you know, you go stay in a hotel, somewhere in the state of Florida, you pay a tourist development tax, ultimately is a bed tax. Now, some cities and municipalities have additional taxes on top of that as well. You do not have that in Pasco County, but those funds are basically used for marketing your counties and your cities and why that's a great place to visit, and also helps fund some different projects. Could also fund events that you may have as well, draw tourism in. Ultimately, that's the, the objective of it. So, you know, there was a lot of, again, all bills failed. That will come back next year. I know that for a fact. It's in some way, some form, there could be multiple bills again that look to either remove it or make statutory changes that were, which will allow the funds to be used in other areas. It was a big battle up there this year. Suits against the government. Obviously, Ms. Meyer is very aware of this, increases statutory limits, a liability for claims against the state and its agencies and subdivisions. When it says agencies and subdivisions, you are a subdivision, you're a subdivision of the state as a city or in or a county. The legislators have, that have sponsored that have tried the last couple of years, and that did fail once again. Not sure if it's going to come back next year or not. We'll see, but it's, yeah, but it's been tried a couple times. Well, here's a big one for you, as you know. And when we talk about, you know, I don't only go up there, my firm, we don't only go up there to look for appropriations. Obviously, we work with our legislators on policy bills that could have an impact on you. So this is the one, one of the ones that, as a firm, we worked on very hard across the state of Florida, which is community redevelopment agency, your CRAs. Ultimately, these bills, your CRAs would have gone bye-bye. They would have gone away, depending on which bill possibly passed or didn't pass. I, I take it, you know, you appreciate your CRAs?
Yes.
Okay. You've made, I know you've made some changes in some areas to the past and pulled out some certain areas, you know, you know, within your CRAs. But ultimately, how the bills are written, one, you know, one of them said by 2045, there will no longer be a, you would not longer have a CRA. If your CRA was going to be sunsetted, say it was, say it sunset, I think I asked you, I said, and I asked your city manager, I go, when, when does your CRA sunset? I think it was like 2030 or something.
Renewed it for the, effectively, 10 years.
Yeah. So, for example, if it sunsetted in 2030, you would not be able to re-up your CRA. It had been done, right? It also would not have let you have any projects, new projects, after October 1st of 2025. So if you wanted to fund a new project with your CRA, even the CRA would have expired in, say, 2045, you would not have been able to do any new projects within that CRA. Use that funding to do it.
Yeah, I found that odd that they, so what was, what were their plans?
Back and forth and different.
Yeah. So you get money sitting in there if you can't do any projects. You just, will you just die with the money in there?
Yeah, so if you, but if you were already, if you already had one, you would be allowed, obviously, to repay that bond or however you were financing it. You would have to, right? But you would not be able to institute any new projects. So if you say, I just don't want it out there, you wanted to do a new road projects within your CRA after October 1st, 2025, you're not able to do that. The dredging project, wouldn't be able to do that. So that failed. So that failed. Don't be surprised if that comes back next year.
Yeah. And I actually went, I mean, just, maybe a couple of times.
Oh, yeah.
Failed kind of the end, end game. So it was, it was progressive. So that's probably a real thing that we could see soon.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised if it didn't come back this year. So between, you know, my firm and others as well. And then League of Cities, there was a lot of effort and working with the legislators to not move that forward. So your, your tax package, I mean, there's, I don't think, I don't know how much this really impacts you, the repealing of the business rent tax, I don't know how much money you get from that. I mean, you get something, so I don't know if your finance director, Mr. Thompson, if you know how much money you receive from the state, from that portion of the business rent tax. Not really, not, not really. Okay. All right. So for example, Pasco County would lose $7 million this year for their portion of the business rent tax. So that is gone now. So you look at it both ways though, you know, and obviously it's, they took it away to help promote business to come to Florida and die to pay that extra tax, or people to create a business and not pay that extra tax on the business rent side. Same time, you know, some counties or municipalities feel that they are going to lose money from that, so you get the budget appropriately. And there's some, you know, great things on here too, you know, creates a permanent back-to-school sales tax holiday each year for the entire month of August. So your citizens, obviously, that are strapped for cash, good time from the shop, they're not going to have to pay, obviously, sales tax, not just five days or 10 days or whatever it was last time, I don't know, 10 days, 14 days, whatever it was, it's all, the entire month of August. Sales tax holiday for items like hunting and fishing and camping, all the way from September through October 31st, you know, promote people to get outdoors and actually, you know, and get out in Florida where, how you're supposed to, right? Enjoy the fishing and hunting or camping or hiking or whatever you like to do. You don't have to pay the sales tax on those items, firearms, whatever it may be.
Four months, right? Or is it one month?
December.
Yep, all the way, yep, September, all the way, yep, September 8th, all the way through the end of the year, end of the year. Okay? So obviously, I'm sure you've had conversations, if you, especially in, we've had conversations, I know about this, and you read your League of Cities updates, there's a lot of talk about repealing the property taxes or, or cutting, or increasing the homestead exemptions, a lot of different, there's a lot of talk this year. So one of the things in the bills was to direct the Office of Economic, sorry, Economic and Demographic Research, EDR, to study the state's property tax system and submit a report, a report that provides options to the legislature to cut down in some way, some form, property taxes. There was also a million dollars in there to study it, the governor did veto that million dollars. Governor stated, we have enough staff, we don't need to hire outside people to do that, internally we can do that study ourselves. So we vetoed the million dollars, but the push to do this still is moving forward. Now, the Speaker Perez did form a new, an additional committee to look at multiple areas to make cuts to property taxes, anywhere from, again, from increasing homestead exemptions to cutting it down, to actually do any way with it entirely. So there was that committee that's going to be meeting, already started meeting, and they'll meet all the way through committee weeks to bring options to the legislature to discuss. Just so you know, if you decided to basically repeal or do away with property taxes, that would have to go to a vote via referendum. Legislature can't just totally cut property taxes and do away with them, it would have to be a vote by the people to do that. I would assume something, we'll see more, and we'll see something possibly come out of this next session that references that, again, whether it be larger exemptions, there was talks about a $500,000 exemption, all the way up to a million dollars in a property tax exemption. Again, there was talks about larger cuts to sales tax instead of that, and then there was a talks about, you know, capping it or repealing it altogether.
Wasn't there, wasn't there a change that did pass the homestead exemption where it's now indexed?
There, I'm sorry, it's what?
That the homestead exemption is now indexed with inflation or something that it does fluctuate? I thought I saw something where it did change something.
There's some addition, and there's a couple of other exemptions in there for certain people, some certain parties, but no, I'm not sure what you're talking about, honestly. I was, that might have been a proposal.
Yeah, I can't remember something, I thought I saw something passed.
Something went, and then I missed it. I'm not, I'm just not sure about that one, honestly. And I haven't seen any write-ups or anything like that at all about that.
From first responders and widows and veterans.
But I thought I saw something where they.
Yeah, there's, there was additions to that. And again, I can always, I can always send you one-on-one, any additional information on things like that. I don't think we really need to go over anymore when it comes to the tax bill that's going to have a, really an impact on you, to be honest with you. Most of this is like for the consumers, you know, there's, there's things that if, you know, on a multifamily, they get a tax exemption if the property's owned by a church, or if it's government land, you don't have any of that as far as I know here in the city. Let's talk about next session dates, it's coming up, as I discussed, we went a lot, a little longer this year. So committee weeks begin October 6, 2025, and committee weeks will continue through the week of December 8th, and then session itself starts January 13th, and that's for 60 days, maybe. Hopefully.
Overtime. So question on our approach, so obviously we submitted, I think, 10 originally?
No.
That 10 million, that request.
Maybe that was a number, and a.
We had, we had, so we had more than, maybe we submitted five or something.
I think you did, I'm pretty sure you did five.
Okay, so else we got three. So we come back with the two that didn't get approved to put it back in there, or?
I think we need to have a conversation.
Sure.
Because those were not put in originally. You know, they were, the legislators did not, your sponsors did not put those in.
Okay.
It's not like they didn't make it, they just didn't, they weren't being put in.
Okay.
So there's always, lots of times there's reasons, but there's also, as I told you all, let's go through, pick five or six, and some good ones that we think might move forward. You're not going to get them all.
Right.
But you did really well, and you got big number items.
I didn't know if that was maybe a standard practice, obviously if there was a reason they didn't, obviously they probably would put them all in anyway.
Felt to be things.
Most important.
Your, your sponsors felt good about and positive about that would have a positive impact for your constituents in the, in the city, and felt there was a need for it, more so than the other ones. And I obviously was grateful and agreed with them. So, you know, start as a team, you know, start thinking about some things, and let's, I would ask you, I'm going to rush you on this, we are a week away from August, less than a week, about a week away, from August 1st. You know, by 1st of September, at the latest, if you can get me a list, so I can start reviewing and having discussions with you guys on what I think should move forward, or what shouldn't move forward. And then I can have, sit down prior, again, prior to committee weeks, I like to be first, not last, when I'm meeting with the legislators, and bring these projects to them, because we may say, I don't like any of them, I have to come back to you again. I mean, not saying that will happen, but it could. But I will obviously want projects that they'll champion and be heroes for, and work, work towards getting funded. Any questions? I know I gave you a lot.
Okay. Any questions?
Counselor?
I'm good.
Are you good?
No, you did a great job explaining that.
Good?
I just want to say on behalf of the city, thank you so much.
Oh.
Fantastic job, and you've opened our eyes to the potential, that dealing with the right people and the effects that that has on our citizens.
Yeah.
Powerful. So I'm thankful that Eric jumped out there and made that relationship with you, and we hope that, we're looking forward to a long-term relationship with you.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
For sure.
Thank you.
One of the things I share, that you shared before the meeting, just put in perspective, right, was I think is great, you know, because, because when you hire a lobbyist, you know, there's no guarantee you get anything.
Correct.
You're putting out real money, hiring a base person on staff to lobby for you, and there's no guarantee you're going to get anything out of that. Well, also, we got 4.3 million for the 36,000 of his contract, and would you say it was 119 years we would have to go at the same rate in order to lose money?
At that rate, you, you could keep me on for another 100, for basically, well, it would be 119, so 118 years, you would still have a return on your investment.
Right. So, at the game.
Never got you another dime.
Right, that's right. So he, he's more than paid for himself.
Probably need to work on his replacement pretty soon.
He's irreplaceable, in my book, so yeah. We'll, yeah, definitely looking forward to many more appropriations seasons with you, Mike.
I appreciate it. And listen, I love working with you all, it's been a joy, it's been an honor to work with the city and your team. And again, like I've told you before, I'm really honest at all times, and there's never a guarantee. You know, all I can tell you is we'll work, I will work hard, my firm will work hard, continue to work hard, but there's never a guarantee, you know. There was a lot of cities and counties that had things in the budget, and they were vetoed. I mean, some had all of them vetoed. It happens sometimes. So you keep doing all the great things you're doing here, and that helps.
So, great work, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And so, just so that we know, so we're, so we want to have Senator Hooper and Representative Yeager in, hopefully together at some point in the future, I know you mentioned it, let's give a little time to decompress or whatever, but I'd like to bring them back in and actually have that big 4.3 million dollar check, where we can do a proclamation and really thank those guys for, for coming through for us on those, so.
I think that's an excellent idea, and if you will, somebody, or Mr. Butterfield, if you would get me, or maybe email me, upcoming meetings in August and September that you have, whether they be, I assume you want to do it at a council meeting, you could probably get away with the workshop if you need to as well. I don't know if you can do a proclamation or workshop. I guess if you, if you approve a proclamation at a, at a council meeting, you could always give it at a workshop.
So city manager does the proclamations, all we got to do is get.
Oh, okay, so you don't have to vote on your proclamation?
No, no, no. It's, there's a discretion.
Okay, understood.
I'll get with you, sir. Thank you for everything, appreciate it.
No, thank you, Mr. Butterfield. So yeah, just give me those, and then I will reach out, see if we can find a time when they can both be here.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate you.
I'd like to follow up on two things, since we've talked about these. To answer your question about the voting on the impact fees, it's unanimous vote with the governing body, not of those present, so it's.
Okay, so we'd have to make sure that if we did that, we'd have everybody.
Everybody here. The other thing I wanted to point out is the information about the plat, we do need to look at the code, your code and probably make some changes, so I need your consent to let me review and instruct you and your ordinance to make sure your plat language is up to date.
Any objections?
Don't move.
Well, I can move this, ten seconds.
All right, that's it. Thank you.
Perfect. Oh, any public comment? Okay, seeing then, we'll move on to item number four. Thanks again, Mike. Take care.
Thank you.
Item number four, discussion on Senate Bill 18, I guess it's Senate Bill, SB 180 Emergencies. Pass that to Mr. Butterfield.
Yes, sir, SB 180, Nancy and Derek have been following it as it made its way through the legislative process, and I asked them both to give us a synopsis of, synopsis of how it affects the staff and the, they both have things to contribute on this.
I will say that in your agenda packet is a memo, and then the actual bill itself, every, every word, every page, and it is color-coded.
Color-coded.
I cannot take credit for the memo, a colleague of mine drafted it, and I thought it was beautifully done, so it kind of showed you the, the different color codings, the kind of the different impacts and the urgency of the different impacts. So that's what I provided for you. Derek's going to go through it and tell you how it really, how it really applies locally and what you guys are doing and what you need to do. I think that'll be the, rather than me sit here and read things to you, that's no fun. So to give you the true, where you are and what needs to happen next.
Okay. Yeah, we felt it was important to actually kind of go through and tell the, you know, council, the community exactly what we're doing. These are after-action items from a very tough hurricane season, so I think it's important to let everybody know exactly what we're doing, and that we are addressing some of these issues. So I'm going to refer to her memo, bullets, I'm going to go through a few bullets and capture some of the things that we are doing and let you know, and kind of just go down the line and, and let you know where we're at and things that we're going to work on. So, starting from, I think it's page 35 on your packet, you know, you have the, what they're calling the yellow impacts, which are things to be aware of, but I did want to point out a few things. You know, the first bullet there talks about training education, and Florida Bill 252 kind of prescribes that for directors of emergency management, you know, counties. It's going to be interesting to see, you know, what they require now for municipalities. We're seeing that requirement, those requirements are starting to trickle down now to the city level. Usually that was a county thing, and right now currently, they're only prescribed for the directors of counties. So that's one thing, we're interested to see what comes out of it. There's the, last bullet, I wanted to kind of clarify, because there's a percentage on there. That percentage has to do with thermal efficiency standards from the Florida Building Code, and the building officials aware that, we talked about that, and that's not an issue. I just want to know, you know, there's a percentage on there, you know how things are with percentages.
Definition of renovated building?
And that, yeah, that's pertaining to the thermal efficiency standard, nothing else. So the good stuff is the, the next section's the stuff that we really got to start working on or have already worked on. And so, the, the first one, first bullet, talks about the city cannot have a look-back period. Well, we were on top of that, right? Because we got rid of that.
Yeah, we were pioneers in that.
Ahead of that thing, we don't have to worry about it. What's nice is that we, we did see this coming, so a lot of this we were able to take care of, there are a few things to do, but I think we're in a good position on being compliant. The, the next one has to do with impact fees, that's just talking about, you know, if your house gets destroyed, you put the like house on there, can't, you know, get those impact fees, we can't charge those impact fees unless it's a substantial, different type of use, and it, it impacts the city systems more than the original use. The, same thing with the third one, talks about increasing building permit fees. In actuality, we reduce them, right? So nothing that we have to worry about, we're already doing it in, in practice. The next two are kind of related, one's more of a general statement, and then one has to do with the last three storms. And that talks about your comprehensive plan in it, like Mr. Moore was talking about.
Derek, what line are you on?
I'm sorry, that's going to be bullet.
36.
Bullet four and five, page 36 to 37.
36, 37. Got it. Thank you.
And again, that's what Mr. Moore is referring to, was those more restrictive or burdensome. And now, the city attorney and I were talking about our free board, and, you know, reading the ink on the paper, it would appear that the three-foot free board being changed during this period of time would have to revert back to the one, but we are waiting for FDM to give us a determination on that. We want, she had gotten opinion from her office, I have my opinion, and then we're waiting on FDM to see what their opinion is. I'm assuming if I'm a homeowner and I've got to build an extra three feet, it's more time, material, and that's more burdensome. So that's kind of what I'm going off of. I would assume that when we get the response back, it would say that we're going to have to revert back to August of 2024, which was the one foot.
And I will say that all my colleagues and I agree that the increase of three foot appears to be more burdensome because of the things Derek mentioned. Veronica had already reached out to her contact at FDM, and we're, they're analyzing it already, so we might as well wait and see what they say.
That would have been, given us points for on our CRA.
But now, even if you don't change it, you can't enforce it. If, if, if it is more burdensome, you can't enforce it. So if it, if FDM comes back and, well, let's say this, if FDM comes back with an opinion that I still don't agree with, we'll have that conversation. That's number one. If FDM comes back and agrees with what Derek and I believe it to be, that it is more, more burdensome, then we'll need to disbar.
Are there any construction that are impacted by that, where they were forced to go with the new rules at three foot?
I don't know the answer.
We had some in the hopper, I think.
Yeah, what's in the hopper because potentially we've incurred uh maybe a liability related to forcing that and now the legislature have come back and down that back. I don't know.
I don't think it would expose anything.
Well, we were well within legal right to do that until this happened.
It might upset some people, but they wouldn't have a cause of action against the city.
I'm I'm reading, but I'm trying to figure out. So where where are we talking about three feet?
Okay, so if you're not reading.
It's not in here. Okay, okay.
It may have happened before you were with us. It may have passed up before you joined us.
Okay.
Um, but within the timeframe that's relevant to this, the the council passed like um code that increased the um.
Feet above base of full elevation.
Yeah, like all these people that are raising their homes.
Base but elevation up to three foot from one foot. If that is considered more burdensome, which I think it is, Derek thinks it is, but we're waiting to hear from the Florida Department of Emergency Management. Not enforce it. We have to go back to the one foot because it felt we're in, we're in the territory that this applies to and it happened within that timeframe. I think that's the only thing that I have thought of, um, the ordinance that have been passed during this timeframe that could be affected.
It's basically locks with, I like, there's a short expiry expiration on this. They basically locked that down until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. We couldn't get that back in.
Not until after that. If if this extended, they don't extend it.
And so, you know, some of the issues I have with this is, you know, I understand the intent of this and I and I agree with what they've they've done here. This particular thing that we've done is actually, it's not about people building back after hurricanes, it only impact them. It's just basically anything new coming to the city. And we're actually, while it is technically probably more burdensome on that, but it's it's for the right reason. It has to get you out of floodplain. So I really have a problem with with that. And I also have a problem with it. I don't know if if there's any recourse or whatever. How can a, how can a a governing body go back and undo something retroactively to 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 a city that has home rule and ability to make those changes? I mean, I can see going forward now, Alan, but I don't know how they can go back and retroactively make us do something we've already put in place.
They may have done this with Ian too. There's precedent said, I think it was Ian, that they have done this the last time I saw something like this happen. They did retroact on Ian as well.
Well, I get that they've obviously done it, but it seems like this would be a opportunity for a.
Well, as you say, there's already, obviously with anything big like this, there's already talk about.
Like Form six, for example, they did the thing.
You know, keep keep you posted and keep our ear in the ground and see what happens. Um.
Because that's, this is a good thing. Like I said, this is helping our insurance rating and stuff like that. And that really, um, you know, it's, it seems like a little overreach here, especially to go back and.
We are, uh, you know, currently digging through CRS to find more points. We're trying to get to six, but we're, yeah, so we could make it up.
But this this was, like I said, this was a, this was a, I think it made a lot of sense to do that. That's why we we did. And what's another couple of feet when you're doing that, right? Is it really that much more burden? And the thought process is, is you're probably going to do that anyway because when you raise your house, you're going to do that so you can park under it and all that. So all it really does is keep the houses from being arbitrarily low.
When you, and you hope if if this is something that goes forward, you hope that people still elevate, right? So they, for their own good, for their own reasons, if if they're able to, um, just not letting us force them to to do a little bit more than they were forced to before. At this point, um, yeah, maybe. So we'll 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 come back to you on that one.
Yep. So with the green section, uh, the first bullet, city is required to notify uh FDM, who's the designated uh designated for the city. And so the statewide mutual aid agreement which the city has does that. There's a division of emergency management software system, enterprise software system that all that gets updated in. So constantly look at that to make updates as needed. So that one's covered as well. The city is required to post the FAQ section on its website regarding emergency preparedness. So if you notice that the hurricane guide is a little bit more beefier this year, that's because we saw this coming and we went ahead and added those items in there now to take care of that.
Who's chuff is it? Is it, does that change?
So by your code, uh, which is pretty old this section, uh, it designates the city manager as the uh department head of emergency management.
Got it.
That's currently how the code reads. It's a, it's in there and it looks like it hasn't been touched in a while.
Thank you.
The post storm permitting plan for expedited permitting and inspections, that was actually kind of fine tuned during this last hurricane season. I was talking to Veronica. They created a plan and a permitting guide, uh, which is what we're at on bullet number four. That one, the city is required to publish on its website every year by May first, the hurricane and tropical storm recovery permit guide for residential and commercial properties. And so again, they created a separate guide for that to address the permitting process as well as that that plan guide and it's online, can be printed as well. So we've got that covered as well. City is required to publish updates on its website as soon as possible. Uh, that was kind of normal practice. I think Sal does a lot of that, uh, social media updates and things like that. So that's a, that's a regular process, uh, practice for us. City is required to provide online options for receiving or viewing and accessing accessing substantial damage and improvement letters. And so we have forerunner and forerunner is embedded in the website and it's shown on the hurricane guide. We made a call earlier today because right now the substantial damage and numbers are on there, but if we're looking at this very literally, it needs to be the letter. So a call was made to forerunner to make the letter public view so that that homeowner can go ahead and look at that. And that's a a practice that Peneau County did too on uh with their property praiser is they have those letters available that you can click on uh without, you know, without having to go ask, uh, you know, staff to to grab it for you. So it makes it more accessible for the homeowner. So that one is just about done. The city is required to use best efforts to open its offices for permitting services for at least forty hours per week. So this has to do with staffing. And I know Veronica and her team are doing some crossover training to for that to get those different particular tasks completed. This one, we talked to, uh, talked about this as well as it might be an opportunity for a prepositioned contract for staffing. That was hard. I know the state had ran out of bodies to uh respond to some of those requests. And so even regionally, because of the way the last storm was impacted. So I think the the idea is to do what we can internally with cross training and and see about getting some prepositioned contracts for the particular needs that we need. Doing it that way, we know exactly what we're going, getting. When we ask the state, uh, you know, through web U O C, you get what you get. So working on that one. All contracts for goods or services related to emergency response, uh, there needs to be a breach of contract provision in there. A lot of times I've seen this with the breach contractors because they see the bigger money down south, especially with all, you know, smaller communities and they they high tail it out to get the big money. And the smaller communities are usually left high and dry with no recourse. So this is going to require us to put those in our our contracts that we're going to be working on for debris management and monitoring. So we'll, just something to add in there into the language. And then this last one, uh, this last one's a toughie, uh, because it has to do with debris management sites. We're talking about real estate and the city doesn't have a lot of real estate. And so the provisions uh that FDP puts on a debris management site, the setbacks in a community with a lot of water, wetlands and water production wells makes it difficult. And so the setback for vegetative debris on a debris management site is fifty feet from open water or wetland and a hundred feet from water production well. That one's not as hard. It's the construction and demolition debris. That's a hundred feet from open water, a hundred feet from wetland and five hundred feet from water production wells. And that's what's getting us. And so we we thought, you know, maybe the field behind us, but it we cannot make the clearance with the water production well. There is a provision in here. I know we tried to do things ourselves, right? There is a provision here that we can meet this requirement by doing an MOU. We are trying, I've been trying since I got here, uh, to get, find a spot, uh, aside from the city having to buy something, uh, to not do that. But I I think we we might have to because we, it's very hard to find something that's going to work for a degree management site. And now we are required to have that or the MOU. So that's one that we're gonna have to work hard on.
So it's not optional. We have to do it.
Either, yeah, one of those, site or an MOU. The site, getting the permit's not hard. Uh, it's just drafting a plan. I've done it a few times. The hard part is getting, meeting those setbacks.
So an MOU would allow us to have an agreement with the property?
Uh, you can, you can do that. In this case, MOU, uh, it could also be with an adjacent municipality or the county. And so I know during the last storms, county used the old Magnolia Valley Golf Course. Far away. I'm I'm assuming Newport must have piggybacked on that, but that's an option too if we can't find a space.
So didn't, we didn't have a spot in the city where we were had, we had debris managed, but they picked it up and they took it to the dump, didn't they?
No, we were using a water plant site, so a water plant site.
They were picking stuff up, dumping it there first?
Yeah, yes.
Everybody dumped it there first? Everything traversed that?
Well, the, and when we, we were doing it internally, when we started internally with the city, we were bringing it there. Then we were doing a combination of going to um running it to the dumpster because of the amount of trucks we had. We were taking to the there and bring it there at the same time. And we were loading dumpster simultaneously. So we had multiple things running at the same time to try and get as much out as possible.
Yeah.
So we had trucks running out directly. We had stuff being brought here and then we had dumpsters being loaded as well on on the same time.
Ideally, you wouldn't want to handle it more than once. You pick it up, you take it to dump, you go back, pick up some more, expose it.
Yeah, but we wanted to get it out as quickly as possible. So, you know, the the thing is, is that if if five trucks got loaded and they headed out, I mean, then you got to wait.
Wait, yeah. So I guess you get it out in front of the homeowner quicker.
Also for.
The storm's coming in and we were trying to get.
Right, the second.
Objective is to get it away from the homes as quickly as possible.
Yeah, makes sense.
We'll deal with that on the on the other side, but.
For fee reimbursement, you know, you have to have your debris separated. And so the purpose of a debris site is that you can get it off the street as quickly as possible and go through the separation process.
There was some separation happened on that too, I guess.
You can get, that that's the the reason for a debris management site really. Uh, because if you load it all in one dumpster, you're getting mixed and they they don't like that because they they need it separated so that they can account for it directly.
Little thing, there are people sitting there pulling.
So so, you know, I've seen it where, yeah, if it's smaller, uh, smaller items, sometimes they'll use large pieces of equipment to do the same as well. It just the i- if if it is mixed, it really becomes all C and D. If you have anything in there, a white good in vegetation, C and D, it all just becomes C and D and you have different fill require, you know, higher money, more requirements, where vegetation's easy. You take it, you chip it. Sometimes you can get rid of it for free because people like mulch or it can be reused. The C and D is hard to deal with.
The cabbie still sorts out today, even even right now. They constantly sort out because there's only so much that they can, they have to bury, you know. Most construction debris, especially like, you know, pressure treated material, things like that.
They're chipping it.
They they can't incinerate. So they have to, they bury it at the landfill. They bury it and then, you know, then then they wait for it to break down. And then they re dig it up and then try to incinerate it. But they can't incinerate it right off the bat. Too many chemicals are in, are inside, exactly.
I took my own stuff to the dump, obviously. So the uh, when you get there, it was, some stuff had to go one place and you had to take other C S I got separated on.
So like all the appliances and stuff, they recycle. They'll, they'll take that, put them all together and put that in a whole different pile and recycle those as well. So.
You really, you know, four categories. You've got your C and D, your vegetative, your white good and your hazardous. And they all need to be separate if you can, yeah.
People got rid of cans of paint during the storm.
See, see that, I I tell you back where I came from, uh, they stopped the whole operation because one can of paint was in there. Guy had to go pick it up out of the pile and put it, yeah, so their DP does drive around. Look, for sure. Other than that, I just want to do a quick update, just let you know that we're working on it. I think we're, you know, considering this just, you know, officially got passed, you know, uh, I think we're doing pretty good. Listen, any questions?
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks, Derek. Any questions?
No. Any public comment? Okay, seeing that, we will move along. Get back up here top. Okay, next up is item number five, appointment of members to boards committees. Uh, I'll pass that to Mr. Butterfield for introduction, quick introduction, I guess.
Yeah, I I just had a technical question.
Well, let me, so I'll go and take the.
Thanks, city.
I didn't want to leave you out.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it.
So we got um the event committee. We've got two uh people that have shown interest to that. Um, one is Brooke Mayer, which is the vice mayor's daughter. And we also have Steve Shirdell, which is uh, he works with Hits one oh six. And I actually uh met with him and thought he would be a great asset for that committee to help uh, you know, get the word out about uh the events, help with uh getting in touch with funding sources and all that. I think it'd be a great resource. So I would recommend somebody make a motion. Let's start with Steve. Should I, I still have the same, Shirdell?
I'm gonna make the motion, just like the appointment of Steve and Brooke.
Well, the reason I do it separately because uh the vice mayor is going to have to abstain from
Yep.
Brooke. So if you could just do Steve, let's get him out of the way and then we'll come back to Brooke.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Steve, uh, Shirdell to the events.
There a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing that, put to vote all in favor, say five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, if I get a motion for Brooke and obviously since it's the vice mayor's daughter, he'll have to abstain from this vote. And just so you know, vice mayor, there's a form you'll have to fill out with Ashley within a certain amount of time explaining that abstention.
Motion to approve the appointment of Brooke Mayer to the Port Ritchie Events Committee.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Oh, second from Bob. Okay, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing that, put to the vote all in favor, say five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, and now that we have the required amount of folks on the vent committee, um, I will uh yeah, we, I don't think council has any preference on when those meetings take place. We'll work it out uh amongst. I guess maybe I can work with you to call the first one since I was kind of outgoing chair and then we can have an organizational meeting before we'll figure that out. But I'll, we may try to do similar to what we did on the Centennial, but I'll, I'll get with you and figure out a good time.
Yeah, if we can, we can get together and schedule that. Um, that way we can have an organizational meeting and then you guys can appoint your chair, vice chair and secretary. And then I can get with the secretary moving forward with your meetings in progress.
Okay, so now you, you were the secretary for the Centennial, right? So that's not.
Events committee will have their own.
Have their own? Okay, perfect. Okay, so we'll work on getting those days and getting that first meeting. Cause I know we've got uh, I know a car show potentially in a work for October timeframe. And then, um, so we're gonna get, we're gonna get right on. Okay, next up is uh item number six, city of Port Ritchie delegation of signatory authority. I'll pass that to Mr. Butterfield for introduction.
It's uh putting another hat on me, I think. And again, I'm having technical problems, so.
Hey, go to it. Sure.
Which uh, yeah, I think it's you delegating uh your signature required on something.
Yeah, so based on this motion to approve staff recommendation to allow myself to sign a delegation of signatory authority letter, this letter will be sent to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, FDLE, allowing our city manager, Andrew Butterfield, uh, to sign and receive all documents related to FDLE grant program.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing that, I put to the vote all in favor, say five by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next up is item number seven, approval of the tentative millage rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, yes, sir. And uh, it was mentioned in the workshop earlier that uh, since our current year is six, three, five, then the max could be seven, three, five. So that's what's on the form uh that and uh, again, I I don't think based on the workshop hearing, is there any intent to go that high? But that's what's allowed by law based on our current year.
Yeah, so let me add a little, you know, I, I really don't like this process because it we we do this and it goes out to the public and the public immediately thinks that this is our, you know, they're going to raise our taxes to seven point three five, right? And they see all the impact of seven, three, five. And as we go through the process and, you know, it doesn't end up being that, although good, like I said, that's the max. Um, so I don't, you know, I don't like doing that, but I I understand the process behind it. Um, I don't think there's any intent here to to do that. Um, but again, you don't want to, you don't want to lock yourself into these discussions without the ability to go up if you need to or whatever. So.
I just want to, can I just clarify?
Sure.
We we actually have a higher maximum that we can actually go to. What we put on this seven point three five is where we we will max it out at. So we won't go above seven point three five.
Well, you can't go more than a point.
Well, we we add a point to it. That's what we're tentative on. There's actually, if you look in that thing, there's a maximum millage rate that you can actually go to.
You can go to ten. But you can only go one per year.
Right, but we're only, well, that, right, that's why we only go one.
Right, so this, so what we're saying is, is if for any reason though you go above that number, if you put in seven point three five and you finish a budget that's seven point three six or higher. You can't do it. You can't do it. You can do it, but you're gonna have to file back to the state and it's gonna take a, it's gonna take a lot to have that done. And they're gonna want to know why you didn't file that in the beginning. That's why a lot of, a lot of, a lot of towns go five mils or six mils above because they have all that room in the world and that they're nowhere, they're never going to do it, but it's there.
That's just saying we're not going above.
Right. Well, no, I I get the process of that. I was understanding that you couldn't go above a point.
No, that's, that's what we do. We we do that as a tentative millage rate to go forward. But yeah, we, there's a minute, there's a maximum millage rate that we sign off on as well. It says we can, we can go that. I can't go above that max. One mil is what we go above. And once we set that like we did, we can't go above that seven point three five millage.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, especially for your tentative, I don't know that there's a, I don't know that there's a limitation, but I'm looking like.
Okay, well, I'd like to know that that process that was correct. This is my understanding. You could go to ten, but you could only go one per year incrementally to get there, but your max is ten. But anyway, this this practice obviously is always you, which I thought was going to max, you could for the year and then you you work it from there. So anyway, I don't know what you all want to do. If you want to go ahead and and make a motion to approve that as the tentative uh millage rate for sole purpose of um budget process or.
What's this, what's this do?
I was just saying, I don't know if this was mentioned because I started reading, but I think what's important to know and why you do that is because you can't, whatever number of your tentative millage rate is, you can't go above that max. So if you go low and you start to get into your budget and you have an issue, you're stuck. So you give yourself some room. You you want to stay at the six, three, five, and they know that and that's the goal. I thought that was the right number, but you're, you have that level, that
Flexibility.
Flexibility. So that's. Flexibility. So that's.
Yeah, we, we wanted 835, we want to, but we, as a, as a standard only went to one or as, you know, so we went to 7.35. So at this point, we could add a percent and then, but we can't add anything above that 7.35.
But, yeah. Tentative is exactly what it states. Questions on this process?
Yeah. When, when is the tentative rate due to?
Thirty-five, thirty-five days after the certification, which certification was July 1st. So we have, um, I, I'd like to have it done this week. So we vote on tonight.
August 6th. It'll be September or something.
Thirty-five days after, uh, it was, uh, certified, which was our, when they gave us our original numbers, it was July 1st. So we had 35 days after July 1st.
So it's coming to.
August 8th or something.
Yes.
Yeah. Or 4th.
Okay. Now, I, I.
So we're not gonna have another meeting between then. You'd have to have a special meeting. So we need to move something today.
We need to do something today. Right. And like I said, it's 735 gives you that maximum flexibility. Uh, I can tell you, I, I'm, I'm not even in, in, in agreement to go past, uh, 635. I wanna lower it again. But, you know, this has to go out. This has to give us flexibility to have conversations. So.
Motion to, uh, approve a tentative rate of 7.35. Tentative millage rate.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would note that's not what's gonna go on the.
Right. This is, this is, this is not a final millage rate.
Right.
It's, it's not even one's been talked about. It's just, it's just a, a stake in the ground.
Digging the ground.
That, uh, we can't go past.
Correct. And, and let me just make an observation. Right now we have a budget that looks pretty clean based upon 6.29.
That's correct.
So standing down, and that's our intent, we need to work the final numbers, but we're giving us room to be able to adjust up to one full point.
Right. Yeah. Cause several things can come up. Uh, you may wanna set aside more money for appropriations. You may wanna set aside more money for disaster relief, whatever it may take. Chiefs may want 12 more cars. You know?
You haven't got your health insurance yet.
Correct. Yeah. So if they come back at 60%, we have to add, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in budget. This allows us room to do that. I don't foresee that happening. We're, I made that budget based off of what we have. So I think we're fine. This is just for us to keep working until we finalize that number.
Well, we, we understand that. We're making, making that known to the public so that they don't freak out.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's a really, I, I wish they, it lived differently. But, uh, it's, and I, I can tell you from experience, last year we had somebody show up at the first meeting because they got that trim notice and I was like, what in the world? Why you raising my taxes again? And, and, and again, we said, hey, hold on. This is, we're getting ready to lower. So, you know, it's a, it's, it's, it's a process that people that don't really know the process don't understand it. But it, it does drive people out here too, to have discussions what we want. When we talk about budget and taxation, we should have room for folks to tell us how they feel. Maybe they want, uh, they want to see a tax increase for dredging or whatever that they're passionate about, or maybe they want lower taxes. I mean, obviously we're up here to represent folks. Um, so we kinda know that going in, but at least this could motivate to get people here for the other meetings too, which that's probably the only positive thing I think comes out of it is it, it might scare somebody enough to get here, show up and they can actually get here for them.
I, I appreciate you clarifying it though, for the record, to save us a few angry phone calls in the morning. So if people are watching or listening.
And just, if you could just.
It can be very.
If you could refer them to Dave and Bob as they put the motion second forward, it'd be great to explain that.
So Dave and Bob.
That's right. D A V E N U.
Make cuts, we're gonna have a.
Be Dave, I'm out of town, so.
So, anyway, so that being said, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, I put to the vote all in favor, six, five, by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? He's on, he's already, he's looking up.
And if you notice, everybody voted for it.
Yeah. I just, you know, I, I, I wanna bring that out and probably people won't see it or whatever, but, uh, it's, it's not the greatest process, but, uh, it's one we gotta operate under. So. Next up is, uh, item number, really eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 and 13. Um, so I'm not sure how we wanna do this. But I, I will say we're at the two hour mark. Do we wanna take a quick bio break before we talk about cars? I think we probably should or should.
I think we should.
I know, I gotta, I need to use, can we take, yeah, let's take five. Yeah, no accident. Well, I could probably make it, but, uh, listen, turn for five minutes. Recession.
I got you. I got you a little helper right here.
Okay, we're gonna resume. Okay. So next up is item number eight, fiscal year police vehicle purchase request. I will pass that to Mr. Butterfield for introduction.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. As you alluded to, uh, earlier, look at this, the next six items altogether. However, the first three are FY '25 vehicles for, uh, the police department. And then if you look at the next three, it's FY '24 vehicles that were never purchased. So we've packaged them this way. So you can, uh, you can, uh, you can see that the differentiation between the two F wise. So, and if you're a question, curious about funding wise, we have the finance director here talking about it, but the chief is ready to, uh, defend the, uh, yeah, so, of these vehicles, which of course we'd also reduce the fleet. Uh, there was some questions by councilman earlier about, uh, also sending things to auction when we're done with them. But, uh, if you wanna talk about that as well.
Yeah. So why, why don't we, why don't we approach this from, cause obviously the, it's, it's two sets, right? A set of three and another set of three from a different fiscal year. Um, the way the agenda goes is first one is actual purchase request. Then the next one is the lighting and equipment purchase request for the updates and then the radio. So it's, it's basically three gen items for one set of the three vehicles, right?
Different vendors.
Different vendors, right. Exactly. Um, so why don't we talk about just police cars in general as a whole and, and, and I can tell you, I had some conversations uh, with, with chief and, and Andy, um, and finance director on this. Uh, but I let, I let chief kinda talk about his, his vision, what these for and any, kinda where this kinda came about. And then I, I think, I think there's a solution in here that it makes sense. We'll, we'll get into that after chief. So chief.
So from going back to 2020, we kind of been, seems like the department's been keeping a rotation of, of three vehicles per year. Um, so we don't wear out the whole entire fleet one year and have this huge expense. Um, so continuing to keep it down to three, you get about three vehicles totally outfitted that are police related vehicles for about $220,000. So trying to keep it there is good. I personally like to order these things in the beginning of the year, which is in October, like councilman Mueller, um, expressed last commission meeting that why we wait for these big expenditures. I had no idea, but when I got here, uh, and when I saw that we had to get these vehicles done, I wanted to get them right away. Mr. Cobbler informed me that they still had three vehicles from last year that they failed to, um, order. So he suggested I put in for those two. Um, we had discussions about maybe not doing last year's and just doing them again next year. But next year, we have no idea what the cost is gonna be with the tariffs possibility, um, and, and everything else going on. Plus if we wait until October and order three vehicles, we probably won't get them till somewhere around April or May, because that's when everybody in the entire country, the police departments all order their vehicles. They're, they're built in October, November usually, and then they shut the factories down and convert them back over to civilian models. Um, so then we can't get them. And then by the time we get them to the outfitters, there's only certain amount of companies that actually outfit vehicles. And right now it seems like in the whole entire state of Florida is probably like less than 10. And I know in this area we have three. And trying to get them to do one car, you're lucky if you get it in three months because they have these other companies that are doing 150 to 200 cars. So they're making a lot more money on them and they're doing their cars quicker. So if we can get our cars now, um, these cars are actually built already. They're on the lots, ready to go. As soon as we get them the purchase order number and we order them, they'll ship them right to our dealers. Um, they'll get stickers on, they're waiting to put the outfits in there, the sirens, the radios, everything's ready to go. And hopefully if everything works good, barring no hurricanes, um, we should have these vehicles on the road before October. Um, and to me, that's, that's a good process. I've never done it this late in the year before, but like I say, whatever happened, happened before. I can't control that. But now I think if we are able to get these six approved, we're being in pretty good condition. And then next year, um, again, we decided to leave those out of the budget for other reasons. And the vehicles that were supposed to get replaced next year will be spares. Um, so God willing, and we don't get into any major problems with our cars where we have storm related damage or any other kinda damage from accidents or anything else like that. I think we'll be able to get by next year without having to order those three cars for you. And then we could see where we go in 27.
Yeah. And, and so to expand a little bit more on that, the conversations that we all had was, and, and right now I, we have three cars in the budget for the upcoming budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And so in, and, and am correct if I'm wrong, but, um, the 24 cars that weren't ordered that are on here for the next, for the items 11, 12, 13. You know, once, once you don't purchase something that you put in the budget, it, it doesn't, it doesn't extend. So you can just buy it later on. It, it rolls back in and it comes back in as, as, uh, money you can allocate for other things, right? So basically what happened with those three cars is they were allocated for other things in this year's budget. Correct?
Spent it.
Who didn't spend it. So obviously we, we didn't purchase three cars, which we, that was kinda the thing we were doing and we, we, we should have. We didn't. And so that's why it's, he's asking this. Obviously we don't, we don't wanna go car poor. Um, I think there's a compelling reason to accelerate the, the way I look at it, accelerate the purchase of the three that we would be appropriating next year in the budget. Purchase them now, two reasons. One, we'll get them very quickly and outfitted and they'll be in service. Uh, and two, the, uh, what was I going, so we, we get them, we get them quicker. And if we, instead of actually waiting for next year, October 1, him ordering three more and it take a long time, instead we just take that money we would have spent on cars next year. We don't budget it and we, we, we put it in something else or whatever that we need, knowing that it was basically, it's coming out this year, right?
So you're talking about $750,000 for cars?
No, no, 500, right. But what if?
Forty.
Four sixty.
Twenty-four, twenty-five or twenty-six.
So originally.
Is that what you're talking about? Twenty-six ordering them now?
Well, no. So what I'm saying is, is instead of, so what, what would have happened under the normal process is we would have bought three of these cars, item 11, 12, 13, last year. We didn't. Okay?
Right. That's why.
Totally agree. Being asked for, right? So the, what, 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 what really would have occurred is we'd have bought those three, we'd have bought three for this year and we'd be buying three again next year.
Right.
So I think what we've, what we find ourselves in is in a good position. We can get the cars from last year and let's call them next year, right?
How much, how much bottom line? How much are you talking about spending?
Well, let's, let's get to that in a minute. Let's, let's talk about number of cars, where we would have bought and, and kinda.
Six cars, we know that.
Right. So instead of nine, we're actually saving three cars because we're not gonna, we're not gonna buy cars next year. And what, going forward, if we can, can, continue to do the three cars a year or whatever for the replacement plan, or maybe we drop that back again. That's all further discussions. But that would, that would go into 27 budget, right? If that's, let's just say it's three, if we keep the same cadence. Um, and then he would basically, once that was approved in the budget in October, he would order that year's cars because it's gonna take until April, May to get them anyway, uh, which is middle of the year. So I think.
That would also help us space out the purchasing.
Right.
We got three that arrived in October and three that arrived. That would also help us space out the purchasing. We got three that arrived in October and three that arrived in May. We don't have the six. We got all the same day. And then five years from now, we have six going out at the same time.
So I want you to think about this in a couple of different ways. Think about we're buying, if if we buy six cars, right? That's all for discussion.
Your request is for six.
Six cars. If we buy six cars, what, what we're really doing in agreement with 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 chief is we're not going to budget three cars next year. So we're kind of advancing the purchase, if you will. And that's not a counting term that.
I know, I I get where you're going, but
But it's a wash.
We got three cars in the budget for next year, right?
We're gonna take them out.
Gonna put them on next park, okay?
Or whatever.
Whatever, yeah, something else.
Or not spend it all and just recoup and just.
Well, we need to be spending that stuff.
Well, sure. Again, it's it's all the conversations.
Yes, and we need to have that capital discussion because we haven't.
The thing to note is, is while we buying six car, if we buy six cars, we're not buying nine. We're buying six. And we, we're not, we're not buying them last year. I mean, you can think that we're buying last year. We're not doing them next or we're buying them, we're buying next year's now because we're getting lower price.
But that's a change that he's gonna make to the budget. That's all you're suggesting.
Right.
Well, that would, that would take you guys, because five cars or six cars are not appropriated this year. You have three cars. So we do have funds, so we don't have to suck out a budget amendment. You guys just make a motion that we take it from. There is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in Nick Park's appropriations in Pay for Pasco. You just say, take the difference from that, and we just reappropriate it that way. And that way, we have some money.
Back to my question. What is our in the capital account for Penny for Pasco? What's it, what's been incurred? What do we anticipate spending for the remainder of the year? And how much under run are we gonna have?
Well, this would, this would overs.
No, this wouldn't overspend us. Like, so for instance.
We're under running.
Yeah, we're.
Right, well, again, that seven fifty that came in, we had, I don't know what the balance is, whatever. But if we, we seven oh five, seven fifty?
Seven oh five.
Seven oh five, I'm sorry.
Just like.
Penny for Pasco coming in.
Right, so we're, so we're, we get seven oh five come in every year, roughly, right?
This, this. This fiscal year, seven forty-five.
And so we'd be spending more than we budgeted.
Yes.
Three cars, because we had a budget of three cars, so we'd be buying six.
The total. Dollar wise, we'd still be underspending. It might not be on the right line, but we'd be underspending, right?
Correct, yes. And we taking that money out of Nick's park to pay for these cars, we should still come at that seven hundred and five thousand dollar. We shouldn't have too much overspend.
And it should come out of reserves at all, right?
No, well, I, I, at this point, I don't believe we are gonna touch reserves.
Which is why I was asking for that schedule.
But the point is, is that because we aren't buying three cars in next year's fiscal year, we're actually paying ourselves back for buying an extra three cars now, even though it's not really extra from a, from year to year. And we don't have a budget for six cars because we didn't buy three last year, right? It went away.
No, we got a budget for three cars and a boat ramp. Right. Is what we have.
Right.
The boat ramp isn't gonna get done, but the cars can't get done. So all we're doing is we're looking at one and paying another.
You could look at that way. And but at the end of the day is, we're not buying six cars and another three next year. That's, I want to make that abundantly clear. So it's a win. Right? Because we basically saved three cars in a three-year period.
Well.
Right? For all this, I mean, the budget didn't work that way, but from a real money perspective and call, I mean, it's what's really happening.
But the real question needs to be asked is, we just buying cars, what do we actually need?
Well, let's, let's have, let's have.
That's gonna be the bigger conversation.
And I also want to, and I, and I got to thinking about this after our conversation. And you know, obviously, these police cars, they run all the time. So there's gas usage and and maintenance issues. And that's kind of why we got to replace them. You know, and I, I did a little research, and I'm not electric car person by any stretch. You know, I think they, they have things. Hold on.
Nope, 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 nope.
And honestly, in our, hold on. And honestly, and this just, this is just a, this is a seed that we can think about for the future or whatever.
Oh, my God. This is the scariest thing I've ever.
Here we have, here we have. So I don't know if we should think about in 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 the future or whatever. Obviously, you can't, electric cars no good for the water we have. Saltwater is just a bad idea all the way around. But the majority of the time here in the city, we don't have those issues, right? So I wonder if we look at, at some point, maybe having a a set of three cars that are, that the the on-staff police are using for their, their shift. They still have their, their car that they have, right? But you have a fleet that's on here that they can use for the shift, that we can save some expense on some other cars. And then they, they have the other cars as an option. But we could reduce costs by using those when they were appropriate to use. This is, this is outside the box thinking.
I got a question. We're, we're slated to buy six cars right here. We're talking about this right now. And we've had some bad experiences with Ford electric cars. We already talked about that, okay? Some real bad experiences. And I'm not, this is not a nothing group, by the way. It's Ford. You know, make sure we're clear about that. It's a Ford. So why don't we try one? Just try one. Try one, try the side, try the base model Cybertruck and all-wheel-drive version of it and put all bells and whistles on it, do everything else, make it the chief's car. And he can say. No, and then he can say, I love it, I hate it, or whatever. And I just think for us, here's what, I just looked at six, almost seven thousand dollars. After we paid fifty-some thousand for a truck or sixty thousand for a truck, another seven thousand dollars for oil changes and maintenance agreements. I've had my truck for months, probably close to nine months now. One thing, one time broken, not even one time. Didn't even have it taken back for service, never even had to go back and see it.
Because you're always charging it.
No, 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 but I one time. I got free.
Actually, you want a, you want a vehicle that's gonna last the entire shift. And I think, again, I don't, I've not done any research. I know.
Three hundred and twenty miles per charge.
Yeah, and and honestly, they're not responsible.
It won't work. It doesn't matter. You're, you're, that's a lot of control. You would probably be amazed at how many miles they put on in a shift.
I could tell you, it's, it's not even about the mileage. I get it, you get three hundred something miles, but you get into an accident, sits there for forty-five minutes with all the lights going, the computers going. That mileage doesn't matter. It's still gonna drain the batteries to almost nothing.
Yeah, air conditioning. I don't know if it's even five.
Recharging it within the, within the shift. Then you take another cop out, or even if you say, hey, put it in, get into another car. Well, then by the time they unload everything, load their stuff into another car, that's another forty-five minutes and the car's probably charged and they can load it back in there. And then, like, like we say, we're not talking about saltwater all the time, but I know in the last meeting, we talked about sunset when, in a high tide, there's saltwater all over the road. So you're always gonna have certain areas that, hey, don't drive over there. It's part of the city. We still have to patrol it. But if we have an electric car, it's kind of hard to put limitations on people like that. Plus, the other part of it is we don't have the infrastructure right now for the charging stations. If that's something you want to look at, because we're not getting cars next year and possibly in twenty twenty-seven, because not only do we need the charging stations here, we also need to start putting them at the officers' houses. So who's gonna pay for an officer to have a charging station at their house? And then the union's gonna step in and say, why are we not paying for the officer's electric bill? Because they're using their electric. They don't put their own gas in the cars now. So those are issues that I think we all need to discuss. I'm not like off the table of anything. I'll discuss anything. I have no problems with it. It's just, these are things that we've already discussed in other places that I've been. And it just, it's really hard because that infrastructure costs a lot of money. I know it was quite a bit of money just to put a couple of charging stations on our PD down there, and we ended up not doing it. Whatever you guys decide, I'm okay with. I'll be willing to try it if you just want to do with one, but I'm not driving it. And I have no problems with electric cars. I just, that truck just looks too bulky and big for me to be trying to pull out into traffic and do traffic stops.
Let me tell you, I was not advocating for a Cybertruck. Let me get that right out.
And I'm sure it's a little more money than a F-150.
The thing I said to Andy.
I think we got some priuses in the budget.
Was, uh, what was, what was the city?
Bring my phone with me because all my bosses are here.
I've got it.
It's a text.
I'm gonna be honest, and a lot of cities aren't gonna tell you this, but a lot of cities that say, hey, we're doing green and we're doing this. They're using electric cars for their, like, the, the dressers, the cars sit there all day, or admin staff where the car sits in a parking lot all day. There's very few agencies actually using them on twelve-hour patrol shifts that are on the coast.
As I said, if we wanted to start, we, we, there was some discussion earlier today about getting rid of the two admin vehicles, so we could sell those both and then start with another.
Model Y, try a model Y for sedan, little sedan.
Well, so I don't know, the public would like sales, driving Teslas, they're kind of.
Well, so again, it's, again, we need to.
Well, tonight, we're going to make a motion for six vehicles. We don't need to discuss electric cars tonight.
He wants to make a motion for the six vehicles. I second it.
Let me, let me finish. I'm not wanting to discuss anymore, but just.
He doesn't want to.
Okay, then most move on.
To just not discuss electric vehicles. You have to honor the motion.
He didn't make a motion not to discuss.
He made a motion for the six vehicles. He did? Yes. All right, repeat your motion.
We can talk, guys. We can't, listen, we got you. It's, we're not even, not a cog. It's only eight thirty. Everybody relax.
Like, what? Someone makes a motion, you don't think? I don't think he did either. I think.
I didn't make a motion. I'm just saying.
Hey, Bob, I'd ask you for a little latitude.
Electric vehicles and.
I'll hear your motion, but I'd ask you for a little latitude. Do you want me to honor your motion or can you give me a second?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm asking for a little latitude. Can I have that?
Can you what?
Can I have a little latitude and finish my conversation? It, it's, it's thirty seconds. And then we'll, we'll move on.
Turn on the clock.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the, the, the reason I brought it up is this particular South Pasadena has converted to these outfit, does the Ys or whatever. So I think I want to play, see, chief, you wouldn't mind reaching out to that place and just ask them about how they're doing, what's, I'd like to learn a little bit of that, because I think we look in the future. There's opportunity that we could possibly save some money. I don't know if, you know, I don't, I'm not on board with it right now, but I, I think as the future goes on, we need to think about that, because there's a lot of gas being used or burned. And that, maybe, maybe we shut the police cars off occasionally. I don't know. But if there's opportunity for other places in the city, we can do that. So that's all we're, it's plenty. Now, back to the first request.
The six cars?
Yeah. So what's y'all's thoughts on? Are you in agreement with the six cars?
I'm in agreement.
Pretty much. So let's, if that's the case, why don't we get a motion for the, we'll just go down item eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. And if you want any further discussion, let me know, but I'm gonna pass the motion for the first fiscal year twenty-five police vehicle purchase request. Okay, have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, motion second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
We're asking to buy vehicles, but we don't have a requirement. We don't have a need. Where is the information that shows how many people we have driving, how many vehicles we have, what's the age of the vehicles, the whole inventory, the whole nine yards? I ask for that.
I got that right here. So anything that you want, if you want to just look at it, you can. Basically, the, the oldest car is two thousand and eleven. And we've already put in twenty-seven thousand dollars into fixing it up over the year.
It's two thousand and eleven. What is that?
It's a pickup truck. That's our, our heavy-duty pickup truck that we use to tow trailers with, and we also use it for.
We got a building official truck sitting out here in a parking lot that's parked. Can that be repurposed?
Well, if you're repurposing two thousand and eleven with another vehicle that's older, then we're gonna be right back here next year or the next year after that.
Two year, one year, one or two year old?
So th- this vehicle is going to be used for an admin position too. So it'll get used when we need it, especially if we need it in the middle of the night or if the building official is using his truck, then we won't be able to use it if we need to set up a mobile command post or set up our traffic cones and everything else for our traffic homicide investigation that we have.
So that vehicle that you're talking about there, the eleven, you're gonna get rid of it?
Yes.
Gonna be salvaged.
If you want to use it somewhere else, it's got eighty-four thousand miles on it, but it doesn't.
Somewhere else, you're, you're done with it.
No, yeah, for the six vehicles we're asking for, we're getting rid of six vehicles.
And what are the, what are the ages of the vehicles you're getting rid of?
The first one is a two thousand and thirteen Ford Taurus. That's got ninety-eight thousand miles on it, and we put almost twenty-seven thousand dollars into it with repair costs.
Over, over its life?
Yes.
Okay.
And it hasn't been used in several years because it's not, the Tauruses were not a good police car. So as soon as they were able to put it as a spare, they put it as a spare and it kind of just sits back there.
Has anybody, is that the one you got parked out here on the highway?
They don't even want to use it to drive in it for that, because it's just, you feel very classophobic in it, and it's almost like a compick. That's why most police departments went away from the Tauruses.
Okay, you're getting rid of the two, two thousand and eleven truck. Taurus. No, the truck.
The truck is a GMC truck. It's two thousand and eleven.
And then the, the Taurus?
Is a twenty thirteen.
And then what else?
A twenty fourteen Ford Interceptor.
What is that?
That's sort of like the regular police cars we have now. They all look very similar.
Explorer, right?
Like an Explorer, yes.
Okay, Explorer.
Can I ask you a question, chief? You've mentioned twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Over its life.
Oh, so yeah, twenty-seven thousand dollars on two or three vehicles.
Each? Each. And that's after the warranties have expired, so.
So I, I because we got this on the table, you know, the Tesla, hundred fifty thousand mile warranty on the battery, hundred thousand mile warranty on the drivetrain of the car. And that, you don't have to pay for it. It just comes with it. You know?
How long does that warranty?
That might come with the civilian models. It might not come with the police models. Police models have a tendency.
Maybe that's why we should call just to find out. And I'm just saying that because, my God, we're buying these cars and then we're spending for a warranty, seven grand. Then we're spending, after the warranty is done, we're spending another twenty-seven grand. This is like crazy.
Yeah, but we're keeping, these vehicles are thirteen, fourteen years old. So that's roughly around twenty-five hundred a year maintenance, when you look at it that way. Okay, so you gotta do like to like. How long is the maintenance on a, on the Tesla?
Other than tires, there is not.
The warranty.
It's a hundred fifty thousand miles on the, on the battery, a hundred thousand miles on the engine, on the drivetrain. All the electric motors and all that stuff, a hundred thousand miles.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, I said, I don't.
Like you said, you can't browse in there saltwater, which you've got a purchase vehicle. You're here, I'm pursuing the battery goes dead, you could be driving all day. I mean, then you have to, you have to have twice as many vehicles as about, just to swap them out, because the battery's gone dead.
Yeah.
And emergency vehicles are not, you don't have electric vehicles as emergency vehicles. It just doesn't work.
Why? Yeah.
You want, like, you want, you want the research? Let me research.
Yeah, that's, that's all my, let's, let's not, it's not the time to talk about it, but I, as we think in the future, as we go forward and looking at, at cars, let's think about that as an option. That's us. Let's move forward with the purchase.
We'll research out the cities that have them and see what the pros and cons are. They already have Frank Deliwood, Collins, well, he shouldn't even want them here. And this dip, one way's up, the other.
Yep.
But I mean, there's this, there's no reason to discuss electric vehicles at this point.
Yeah, no, we're good.
You know, like you said, we didn't know how to demonstrate for it, period.
That's correct.
We don't have any of the details of what, for us to do that. So a lot of research needs to be done, even think about doing that.
Yeah, but we're moving on from that. I apologize. I kind of got sidetracked again. Go ahead, Dave. Are we done? I think so, yeah, okay.
How many did I give you so far?
Gave me three. Here's a twenty fourteen Interceptor. How many miles were it?
The twenty fourteen Interceptor is eighty-two thousand, eight hundred.
Eighty-two K. And what'd you spend on the repairs?
Right around twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand. So are we doing all six or are we just doing? Well, he's replacing six, right? You're getting rid of six.
So what we do with this, is these ones that we're getting rid of are all spare vehicles. And we get rid of those, and when we get the new ones, the officers get those and our vehicles they have now become spares. So then they'll last a little bit longer because those are out of warranty. And we can put a kind of a Band-Aid on them, why they're being used intermittently compared to using every single day. But that's how we do.
So essentially, when you get done with this acquisition, how many spares are gonna be sitting around in the parking lot?
We'll have five. We have seventeen vehicles, five spares, but you have to understand, too, I also have two reserve officers that don't have cars. So when they come in, they use one of those spares. So if they both come in at the same time, I could literally have nineteen vehicles out there and only three sitting in the parking lot. If one gets into a wreck, that's gone. If one breaks down, that's gone. And now I'm down to one. And you never know, you know, what scenarios you're gonna have involved with those.
Okay. So there's. You're gonna get rid of?
I think I.
Three?
Did I give you four?
You gave me three.
Okay, we're getting rid of six altogether. We're replacing six with six.
Okay. And so it's, it's in the six that, so.
We're deadlining six if you approve.
These six become the new spares, right?
No, these six actually.
Well, the, the, the ones they replace.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay, understand. Now, I noticed that you had, some of them were cars or interceptors and some of them were trucks.
Yes, I'm trying to, the one request is three pickup trucks. They're all four by four, police-rated F-150s. A lot of coastal communities are going to them because they're a little bit higher. So when you do have storm-related activities, they're better equipped than the interceptors that we have now. And they also are also police-related, so they're just like a regular police car on the inside. It's got prisoner cages in the back for the, it's got rear air conditioning. I made sure of that of all six of these vehicles.
Right.
So those issues are all gone. And like I say, a lot of agencies are going to the F-150 pickup trucks now.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need four wheel drive?
Probably not, but the price difference is like fourteen hundred dollars. So it's kind of, to me, I was like, we might as well just get it. And just hopefully we never need it, but last year, and we've all seen it, it seems to be getting worse and worse every year. And hopefully, it's not going to, but if it does, I want to be prepared for it.
Okay.
It's nice.
You gotta push forward, drive and go. Any other questions? But I think that that information is good to have when we're sitting here making a decision because now you see what went into the process rather than, hey, I just want six cars. I want six cars because this one's a twenty eleven with twenty seven thousand dollars worth of repair. It brings the story together and it's easier to swallow.
I totally agree. That was, that was my mistake. I was told that you wanted to do it. That's why I had it. I thought you wanted to discuss it. If I would have known you wanted a copy, I would have got it.
Well, yeah. Optimally, I would have put it in the read ahead package two weeks ago, but so that's my mistake. But as soon as you brought that to my attention, that would be useful. Yeah. Guy with chief and he. You know, what I'm trying to encourage is people have legitimate needs and I'm not opposed to looking at them. I just want to see the support behind it so that you can make an intelligent decision. And that's all I'm asking, you know? It seems that there are plenty of ideas and plenty of good things that we can do, but we just need to do a little better job bringing the rest of the story together. Because, you know, I could just write any number on a piece of paper, but here's the story. He's bringing it. We've got old vehicles. We've got to have something for these guys, especially when he's got, you know, volunteers coming in or part timers or whatever.
Reserves.
Reserves, yeah, coming in and they don't have anything to drive. And you have to have a backup scenario in case there's an accident or somebody's in a shop or something that happens. But it's a good story. I think it makes sense that what you're saying, Eric, about putting all of that purchase this year and foregoing the twenty twenty six and utilize that money because, you know, we can't put a boat ramp in in two months, right? Can't even get a permit. And we're, and we're the guys that are issuing the permit. I'm kidding. That's a DEP thing. But it makes perfect sense to try to offload to Rob Peter and pay Paul, if you will, to get that moving.
Yeah. And what's nice is that we'll get them quickly and they'll be in the fleet.
Yeah.
Instead of waiting till halfway through the next year. So it's, I think it's win-win.
And I hear you loud and clear on checking out electric, always looking for the best options. So, but we'd have to think it through like with the infrastructure. So we'll at least assess that. We might take a trip down to South Pasadena, just between St. Pete Beach and Treasure Island.
Yeah, that might be an overnight trip.
So, but we at least do our due diligence and check out after future.
And the only other question that I had was obviously these, that they still have these cars sitting out there. I guess there's no price break because it's at kind of the end of the the year and they're late models. It's a contract price. Are we getting any kind of break?
No, I talked to the outfitter, the manufacturer that does the light systems, and he's a Whalen representative, and he offered to do the Tahoe for free besides the radio. And then as long as we allowed other agencies to come here and look at ours, so they could see what the Whalen product looks like, you know, come to the door, flick the lights on, they could see it, and then they could use that as a demo model. Then they would do it for zero cost.
So a little break there.
Yeah, that's a great thing that the chief came up with.
The city, so that's one of the reasons why they told me they would take care of us, because they are sort of a city business now. Where they only had one in Osmar and they do all the sheriff's office. They do Tarpon Springs and other agencies also.
When, when law enforcement officers from other towns come up here to see us, it's a poaching opportunity if we meet good people.
You could drive one of these too, yeah.
So, but then, and then another point is the vehicles themselves, of course, competed on the sheriff's list and that's statewide competition. So we're getting the best prices available.
You mentioned the Tahoe. Is that a vehicle we already own that they're gonna convert?
No. The Tahoe that we're, we have one Tahoe. We're getting rid of it. It's a two thousand eleven. And it leaks. It's got all kinds of issues.
No, I'm talking about the lights.
No, the Tahoe that we're, one of the, it's a brand new Tahoe that we're getting.
One of the six.
At least because I saw.
It's on the first bid of the twenty five vehicles. It's a Tahoe, a twenty five hundred and a Ford Interceptor. And then the twenty fours are three F one fifties.
The Tahoe is the one we're planning on towing the trailer.
The twenty five hundred.
Yeah.
Pickup truck.
That's twenty five. Any other question, Dave?
No, I got it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Welcome.
Christine Sullivan, seventy eight oh eight, Weber Lane. I thought it was a good exercise, Dave. The reason being is not only do you have a better understanding of the need and what you're voting for, but the residents now can look at a video and see why you approved six vehicles. And like I've heard things about Newport Ritchie's police vehicles, people complaining.
You're out, you're out on mute. There you go.
People complaining about Newport Ritchie's police vehicles and they're so nice and, you know, just casual talk, but people just saying that it's too much and whatever. And you now have it on video why there was a need. You know, it was a good little exercise, I thought.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll make a comment real quick. Danny Fields, eighty one fourteen, Leo Kid. Yeah, they need the vehicles. And I, I was thinking about, you know, the electric vehicles. We could look at that, but they need them now. We're gonna get them cheap. We could get them into service and, you know, you see the difference between electric. What I kept thinking about, you know, driving one around just for personal use and maybe even taking a trip on it, but running it day in and day out for hours on hours and hours, how's them batteries gonna hold up long term? You know, they might short out and that they're under warranties, but then you're out of vehicles. So I like gas vehicles. I understand we save a lot of money, maybe the other way, but I'm for the gas vehicles for overall performance. Power, you're running all that electronics through it. You're gonna be draining them batteries and batteries get hot. I know my phone, the battery gets hot on it. Sometimes you have to cool it down, you know, just when you're doing a lot of texting and phone calls. So just think about all that.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, bring back for a vote. All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, Bob on mute. Bob?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So item number nine, fiscal year twenty five, police vehicle lighting equipment purchase request. Uh, passing it back over to chief. And then this is for the three cars that we just approved to outfit them, correct?
I thought, I thought we bundled it all.
Well, no, we're doing, going down line by line. Oh, okay. But we should have less discussion obviously going forward. So hopefully just roll through these. So any comments on the lighting?
That's what it is, is the basic equipment for those three vehicles.
Okay, move to approve. And second, any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, put to vote. All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item number ten, fiscal year twenty five, police vehicle radio purchase requests. I don't think it's any introduction unless chief has anything, but it's just the radio for these three cars, correct?
That's it. And they're approximately thirty three hundred dollars a piece. So three of them come to about ten thousand. And when we switch over to the county dispatch, they're already gonna be programmed for their channels and everything on there.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion to approve, is it?
I said so moved.
I need, I need a motion to approve that you can so, you gotta be, you gotta be clear. If I ask for a motion to approve, you say so moved, that's worth it.
Motion to.
You're out the gate. I know what you're doing.
In between, message it all out.
Motion to approve the purchase request for the equipment of lighting for outfit is reviewed.
The radio.
Radio.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Sorry, sorry, Rob? Uh, Bob? Oh, we already got a second, Bob. Too slow. Uh, any public comment? Seeing none, put to vote. All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up is item number eleven, fiscal year twenty four, police vehicle purchase request. This is for the three additional cars. Is there any other comments you don't make about those? You got all the information you need, right, Dave? Okay, so I need a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty four police vehicle purchase request?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, put to vote. All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, item number twelve, fiscal year twenty four, police vehicle lighting and equipment purchase request. Looking for a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, put to vote. All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, item number thirteen, fiscal year twenty four, police vehicle radio purchase request. This is for the radios for the other three vehicles. I'm looking for a motion to approve that vehicle radio request.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We tried to get you there, Bob.
Yeah, I was waiting.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, put to vote. All in favor, six, five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries.
One second here. I'm reading through this item thirteen. And it's police vehicle radio purchase request. Put in the recommended action. It says a purchase request for equipment and lighting. So that's where I got off.
Oh, okay.
So the headache doesn't match the recommended action.
Okay. Make it over there.
That's what I noticed.
Okay.
The combination of me being remote and working on this agenda.
I got you.
So I apologize.
No problem. I was just trying to redeem.
Salt in the wound, Dave.
I was just trying to redeem myself.
We know that's for the radios. We know that's for the radios. It's thirty three hundred dollars each.
Thank you for noticing.
Reading off the.
Sure. We're good. Okay, so let's finish with council business, moving on to old business. Item number fourteen, is there any discussion of old business?
Did you vote on the last one?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you sure?
I had the motion and the second, but I think you voted.
I don't.
Who made the motion?
We voted.
You want me to redo it?
We do it, but you guys did it.
The clerk is official representative.
Do it, do it again.
Okay.
The city attorney.
No, no, I trust the city clerk.
I have a motion and a second on item number thirteen.
The motion.
You did.
You did, Dave.
And then she waited for Bob.
I waited for Bob.
But then I thought he started talking and.
No, it's after we approved it.
Okay, good. I probably zoned out for a moment.
As long as it's acid, good, we're good.
She's got it.
And I'm pretty sure I did, but I, I wouldn't.
I trust you, chief.
Okay.
Okay, y'all do need to move some money to pay for these cars. So do you want to reappropriate some money from the Nick's Park boat ramp and put it into the vehicles so we can pay for this? Because there's not four hundred and forty thousand dollars appropriated for cars.
Is there enough in the?
Yeah, there's plenty. There's three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that we're not.
Okay, is, is anybody opposed to using that Nick's Park boat ramp money to?
It's not gonna happen within this time frame.
It's rolling. I think you've got that in next year's budget too.
Yeah, we'll get it. Yeah.
We'll show next.
It's already there.
So whatever, whatever you got in next year's budget, you need to add three hundred and twenty five thousand to it.
Correct.
So if you've got a line item in there for a hundred and fifty thousand, now it's four hundred and seventy five.
I put the same amount of money there for Nick's Park so we can get the boat ramp. This is just, this, now, if you guys want me to carry that money forward, I can appropriate it this year in a PO to move it forward. But if we don't appropriate it, it's just gonna move into the big bowl.
Let's talk about that later.
Yeah, anyway, yeah, we just need to move the money.
If you, if you want to spend that money, or if you just want to, if you want to.
Well, we're gonna have money left over this year. That's gonna roll in. More money needs to be put aside for Nick's Park.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah. I mean, just, you're looking for assumptions going into the budget. I think that needs to be one.
There's money in there for this year. Things aren't this year, uh, next year. It's just that there's not four hundred and forty thousand dollars appropriated for cars. We need to reappropriate some.
Right. All we're doing is changing.
Is, is there any objection to using Nick's Park budget funding for this year to purchase these three vehicles?
No objection.
Okay, I can sense this. That's what we'll do. Okay, next up, item number fourteen, discussion of old business. Any old business?
Was that a question for Stell real quick on the contract before the Fox, like, has, are they been able to talk to them yet?
Aye. I haven't heard back from them yet, but they, you know, as far as they're still concerned about the prices, but we still have to lock in what dates we're gonna do for July. They said that they have several openings, so, but we need to decide what, what date we're actually gonna hold the show.
Date? Okay. Did they tell you what dates they have?
I don't have that information on me, but I'll get, I'll get that. I'll bring that back to council.
If, if that, if that's handy.
Yeah.
It was.
That's what I'll do.
Give it to, yeah, give it to fire captain and police chief and they will work out some dates presenting to us. Unless we need to see when they want to make it available, like Friday or Sunday night or whatever. So then, you know, because if they have available, then we'll discuss that.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Al.
You're welcome. Uh, old business for me, so the pier removal. I know we talked about getting them back out here. Bob had mentioned it last meeting or whatever. I, there was some work being done over there and I also noticed that there was new concrete being poured, I guess, like a barrier, which I, I didn't know what was going on. Is that? Was that part of the demolition?
That, that was part of the demolition.
No, cool. I didn't realize that. So that was, that put it.
Oh, yeah, we weren't gonna leave it open.
Yeah, that's nice.
Part of the project.
And I did see the piling and the little white post out there marking that thing. Are they still gonna pull that or?
We have a, we have an onsite meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Because what, you're, that, that marking is not where the pylon is located. So I want to clarify, me, the engineers, Daryl. If, you know, if Andy is available, we're all gonna have an onsite.
Yeah, let's just make sure we get rid of everything that needs coming out.
Yes.
Okay. Any other old business? Okay, moving on to comments from Mayor City Council. I'll start, let's start with the virtual. Bob?
Yes.
Your go on your comments for City Council.
Yeah, you jumbled up your statement again.
I said, we're in comments from the mayor and city council, and I picked you first.
No, I'm done.
Good? All right. Vice Mayor, Mayor.
Um, I, I think, I think it was a productive day and I don't have a lot else to say right now. Good with the way we did today.
Councilwoman Burke?
I'm good.
Okay. Councilman Mueller?
A couple items. I believe we spoke today about potentially looking at a goal update plan. What is the city's goals and then how does that relate to the department goals relative to whatever we established for the budget? You know, he might have a plan to buy six more cars next year. We're gonna work on Nick's Park, whatever they are. I, I think they need to be memorialized in a document like the final budget was last year. I think, I think that was a good exercise. Good exercise and a good breakaway of actually, hey, let's, let's define what we want to do. We got a plan and work the plan, all right? We're coming back on a capital plan.
What serves, is there any update on those chairs? Whatever happened with that?
Actually, I apologize for me being sick yesterday. They, three of them came in that I was going, two of them had to be assembled. And I was gonna have them here tonight. But they will, there will be three to five chairs, different chairs for us to select from. Before I order the whole fleet, so to speak. So I wanted to order, I wanted to get five, at least five different types of chairs that we can all, you know, choose from and then order the bulk amount.
Maybe at next week's workshop, a week from today.
I'll have my hand.
Have them replace these so we can send them and see if they're really worth their weight.
I think we gotta put them out there, look at them, put a price tag on each one.
Yeah, there you go.
Sit in those chairs, see how they feel.
What about our, our certified audit? Do you have an update on if that's completed or been released or what?
Uh, they, we made a bunch of adjustments and stuff like that. They're, it's taken a lot longer than what they anticipated. So I called the other day. We're actually right now working, waiting on our Gatsby audit. We were waiting on some information from Marsh McClennan, which we got the other day. He said it'd be about another week. So once I send that to them, they should have final numbers to us. But all the adjustments we made, it threw us off because we threw stuff into, from capital into capital, you know, we capitalized everything and fixed our asset. So it kind of threw everything out of whack a little bit, so they're working on it. So it should be another week or so.
Okay, so that's in process. Okay. All right, you already talked about the limestone pier, ADP update. What's going on there?
So we just signed the agreement. We got the information back from the lawyer or attorney. We signed, we actually just signed the agreement. So now they're getting, putting the team together. They've already been built on the backend, so I'm hoping that within the next four weeks, we'll be up and running.
Transition. Transition. Side note, because of their relationship with the carrier, we got some discounts.
Yeah, we got, we got a huge discount because they're friends with Marsh McClennan, our broker, so.
Church broker, yeah. About seven thousand dollars. And what about the Centennial Rome? You got an update?
Uh, I, I do. The, they, um, did the label, uh, to put on the, the bottles and it, uh, they actually used the wrong label. So they gave me one of those to, to review before they went through with it.
You got any left?
And they, huh?
Do you have any left?
The liquor's intact. And always will be. Uh, the, uh, so, but, so they met this morning. I'm not gonna update from them, but they were going over that. I actually came by and got the prototype that we had, um, in city hall to take that to, and show them the difference in, and to also. It was just a couple of coloring things or whatever. So they, they have that, and so I should have an update soon on that. But they're, they're at the process of, uh, getting those labels printed and putting on there once it's, once it's ready to go. And then, uh, I'll have to go and, and sign, uh, some labels too, to, to put on the side. Numbering one, one hundred, two, one hundred. But it's, so we're very close to, uh, a finished product on that. So more time.
Cool. Looking forward to, uh.
Sure you are.
And last but not least, um, many of you know that I have acquired a, a house that's outside the city. I've also, uh, placed my house for sale. Uh, and it's my intent to move my homestead, uh, at the, after the end of the month. But effectively, I'd like to turn my resignation in, uh, as council member, uh, for effective seven thirty-one of twenty-five. And it's been a pleasure working here. I really have enjoyed this role. I feel that I've helped make this city more effective, uh, making better decisions. Like I said, I, I didn't want to leave. It's, it's a, uh, a joint effort. And, uh, if you want to be close to your grandkids and, and, and pour, uh, the right things in their life, you need to be around them. So we've made a decision that family comes first. And, uh, my wife talked me into buying another house. I don't know why I'd want to move off the water, you know, two, two floods later, Hurricane City, but, uh.
It sounds like you should have used your three minutes a little wiser with her when you were discussing that.
Anyway. To make the long story short, I'm gonna miss this place, but I'm a still property owner. So you're just gonna see me sitting in the audience. And that's why I'm curious about those chairs. Because these are awful comfortable.
Dave, we're actually gonna mark your chairs, gonna say Dave's chair.
Yeah. Reserve for former Councilman Mueller.
Make sure you put his address in bold. So we know his address.
Yeah. Yeah, five, four, three, nine, Blue Point Drive.
I got your address.
Yeah. Well, we'll have that. But anyway, it's been a pleasure working with you guys, all of you. Uh, I think we've made a lot of progress, uh, in the city. I think, uh, the mayor has actually helped the city turn a corner, evident, uh, evidenced by, uh, Mike Moore's, uh, comments tonight. Uh, they were able to bring four point three million dollars to the table, uh, that's gonna go a long way. And I'm looking at that as a start here. Uh, there's a lot of projects that need to happen in this city and potentially, um, we've got a team, you know, we've got a new chief here. Uh, he's looking like he's getting his department in shape and things are moving ahead. I'm, I'm really anxious to see how well, you know, the new development happens. Uh, there's a lot going on, but if the house doesn't sell, I got a place to stay. So, yeah.
That it?
That's it. Guys, have a good one.
Yeah, Dave, I, I, I think I speak for everybody. I, I appreciate knowing you as, as a, as a resident, as a friend and as a former colleague here on council. And you've done a, you've done outstanding job. And I know you, you've, uh, you spend probably more time than, than any of us, uh, digging into details. And, uh, your, your efforts does not go unnoticed. I, it's been a pleasure from my end to, to work with you alongside you as well. So, um, I, that being said, I know you, you gave us a date of July thirty-first.
You've got one more budget meeting coming.
Yeah, good. Happy to have you for that. Um, is there any objections? I'd like to, uh, get a plaque to commemorate Dave's service with the city. Uh, is there any objections to that? Um, and actually, if we could also get him a, a three-minute stopwatch. So when he sits in the, in the audience, uh, he can keep track of his own time. Yeah, if, if we could get, uh, a little recognition. Dave, I assume you come back and, and we can present that to you as a proclamation at the next council meeting?
Sure.
Great. Okay. Um. My turn. And we're right up on the nine o'clock. And I do have a couple of things, and I actually want to discuss about the, uh, about the council replacement, uh, process as well. So is it, can I get a motion to extend, uh, the meeting past nine? Okay. Second. Okay, motion second.
But extended, we, you don't just extend it. You extend it for like nine, ten, nine, twenty. How long do you think it takes?
That's not true, Bob. It's not, the residents just asked for extension. But I, I can promise you, I won't be long, fifteen minutes max.
Okay, nine fifteen minutes.
Well, again, we are standing. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Any public comment? All in favor, six five, saying aye. Aye. Opposed? I'm assuming motion carries unanimously. Okay. So on Dave's departure, um, we will, uh, need to discuss his replacement appointment process. Um, I know that there has been anticipation of that. A couple of people reached out. Um, I can tell you in the past, what council's done on, on filling a council vacancy is that we announce it to the public and invite them out for the following council meeting. Where they each have time to express their interest in person. And then the council would then, uh, uh, opine on which one they want to select for appointment. And then, uh, they would have the option, if they were pre-qualified, which I would, um, hope that we would do so that they would, uh, we do that at the beginning of the meeting. And they're able to take their seat up here and, and go, go to work. Um, so is there any thoughts on that process, different process? We good with?
Now, in this last, um, election, we elected to replace the person and then not have the election until the next cycle.
So based on the old code, we would have to have a call special election in this case. Um, but because we changed that, council would have the option to keep that appointment in place until the next election in April. Or call. Or call special election. That'd be another thing. But the first thing is to get an appointment in place.
Right.
Um, so is, is everybody good with, um, making that notice to the public? And having them submit their interest and then to show up on, uh.
The next council meeting.
August twelfth. Is that right? August twelfth?
Yes.
Any objections? No? Bob, you good with that?
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah. Right. Perfect. Okay. I'll say, like a census, if we could get that, uh, notification out to the public and let them know that there's a seat that's gonna be available, uh, August first. And we're gonna make that selection on August twelfth. Okay. That being said, um, I was made aware of, and this is kind of an ongoing issue with, with, uh, uh, water leaks, uh, and, you know, pool fills. And all different things around, um, adjusting water bills as there's issues. Uh, we don't have a formal po, uh, formal policy in place. I think there's some past practices that have been done. And so I don't know where staff is on that policy. Um, but I, like I said, I did, I did become aware of, of a couple of people that had some breach. Um, and had some very large bills to the tune of three thousand dollars. Um, and there's, um, you know, there's, there's. There's a couple of things I, I, I want to do going forward. And I don't know what technology we have, uh, in place. If we can, we should be able to do someone, cause I know we, we tracked the usage. And just so you know, the, uh, the individual that had this, they were notified eleven days after that happened by the city. Said, hey, you know, your water's been running twenty-four, seven for eleven days now. And, um, it was his irrigation line, it was totally separate. So, you know, he didn't, didn't see any, uh, pressure problems or anything like that. The water was going right out into the, the lake, uh, behind him. And it wasn't, uh, so it wasn't saturated or anything. So outside the city contacting him, he would have never known. Um, and, and because I guess that's a process that happens once a month, I guess, they look and then they notice.
Uh, we, we, uh, we try to run it every week, but I mean, it's possibly raining.
Yeah, so, so one thing we definitely need to do, and this, even if they paid the bill, we don't want to waste water, obviously, for leaks and whatnot. So we need to somewhat be proactive. If we, if there's any way we can set some kind of threshold that they're frozen alert to say, hey, it's been twenty-four hours and this customer's water's been running nonstop for twenty-four hours. Um, reach out to them as opposed to looking at it by week or by month. And so we try to catch that as quickly as possible. Um, again, if we look at that, find that, but from a policy perspective, um, and I don't, did you find the numbers? Uh, what I'd ask, so there's different, there's different tiers, T I E R S, of, uh, pricing in the, in the water, right? Uh, and, and obviously there's some real tiers when you get that bill. Yeah. But, um, you know, I, I know that, I think in the past, there's, uh, cause if it's a leak on the main line where you have sewer in there, um, the past practice is we remove the sewer charges because it didn't go into the sewer. So we're not paying for that, but we still pay for the water. And we've also lowered it to the lower tier. Uh, so basically the first ten thousand gallons are, is, is, is the lowest tier. And if it's use above that, it gets higher, uh, per thousand gallon. Um, and so that's one way to lower that. And I know this particular instance would probably take his bill from three thousand to about eighteen hundred, just by using the lower tier. Um, what I, what I'd like to ask is what is our actual cost for, for a thousand gallons of water? And did you, were you able to figure that number out?
Uh, I, I did ask Daryl to give me that. But he was, he was out on Friday and I asked him again yesterday at our meeting, and I still haven't, I haven't got that information from him. But I was, I was working on this thing here, so.
So from a policy perspective, and I, and I want to, I want to, I want to put up the policy in place. So we have it, it's, it's formal, it's agreed upon by council and staff uses it across the board. Um, obviously, we can't go back and unscramble eggs, right? But I would also like to extend whatever policy we would put in place. Anybody who's currently in an appeal process with their water bill would be applicable to any upcoming policy change. I think that's fair and reasonable suggestion, is it?
I mean, you, you can, you, that's your policy decision. That, that might lead to the person that already went ahead and paid it a month ago. And now I'm not part of that. Like, you know, the more you, anything more you give, you might have some, some percent. But that is your, that's what you, that's your.
Right. So it, it'd be my recommendation that we, I said, we can't go back and make this retroactive. But anybody who, you know, has appeals their bill and is looking, cause it, cause realistically, if they appeal their bill, they're gonna come and have one-off and ask for something, right? And so I think we've been put on notice, um, about this. And there's been some varying, uh, application of that policy. I want to put something formal together. I think that's somewhat in the works. Um, from a council perspective, is there any objections to? One, I think we need to find out what our cost is for the water.
That'd be fun.
And then it's, and it'd be my recommendation that, that we just, on a leak, that's not the customer's, I mean, it's all the customer's fault, cause on their side, right? But if they, you know, they do due diligence and, and, uh, like he shut it off right away and all that. I think that we could go back and, and say, we'll reduce your bill to the, to basically pay the city back what we spent. Also, if it's in the spin sewer, we take that off. I think that should be part of the policy. Um, I think we could also look at, if people want to do pool fills or something, um, instead of just reducing that, maybe we can do a, a, a cost closer to, uh, our cost on the water too, to help.
If I may, I was gonna say, before Matt left, we started working on, um, a policy for pool fills. I will bring that back up with Andy and to that complete conversation. I think we were close to finishing it, but then something got sideways.
I, I think the key to this is we find out what our cost of water is. And I think that's probably the, the threshold that we'll be able to lower to. And maybe we go a little bit above that or right at the cost. I don't know, but, and I don't know what the, the delta is between our water cost and what our first tier cost. I'm sure there's a profit in there.
I, I do have to, I do have to stay. I, I think we're opening a can of worms with this. And the problem is, it's gonna be, is you start doing that on irrigation, they're gonna want that on the other part too. Now, we do do sewer, but we don't, we don't eliminate all of it. So when you have an eight thousand dollar sewer bill and we only eliminate six thousand dollars of it, you still have that leak. So when you're talking about doing that, you're gonna have that, you're gonna open up a can of worms. I, I understand where you're going with it, but also, I mean, this has been, this, our practice has been, okay, let's offer this and the lowest tier. I, I totally get where you're going with it, but I think you're just, it's a can of worms.
Where do you, where you start, where you stop, right? And I, and I get that. I just, personal experience, when I lived in Louisville, what, what the Louisville Water Company had in place was if you identified, like, say your toilet was running. And you, you, you found out it was running all the time, you fixed it, you submit a repair bill, cause you had that large water bill. What they would normally do is they would credit you fifty percent back is what their pro, policy was. Again, um, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to profit on people's misfortune, basically, right? So as long as the city's made whole, taxpayers are made whole on what our cost is, I think we could be, have a policy and how far that policy stretches on leaks. Obviously, you don't want to do it where you, you probably want, you could only do one a year or something like that. You, you want to build some things in. But I think we need to, from a leak perspective, with this, if we've been, uh, notified of it, it's verifiable. They've shown that they corrected the problem, they've got a bill, that we work with them to reduce that as much as we possibly can. Because again, we're not here to, to, uh, profit off people's misfortune.
You're gonna have to let them establish a procedure because you're gonna have to calculate this consistently.
Right.
In each case. And some, you know, you basically got to make up the white space.
Right.
Because you got prior history, you know, what your average is, you got this spike. So the delta should be that whatever that is above average potential. So there needs to be a procedure to go through that process.
And there is. There, there's a procedure now. It's how we do our leaks. And we don't, we don't take the bill and say, you know, your normal bill's ninety dollars and we just take all that off. No, we, we do the basic and then we do whatever that overage is. And that's how you get your, your, your sewer adjustment and all that. But, you know, I.
There's, there's, there's. Yeah. All, all I'm saying is, is we're gonna ink out a process, you need to go through the whole thing.
I would recommend doing a policy, you know, some of the other municipalities as well. See what Pasco County, New Port Richey, some of the others. As well. well, see what Pasco County, New Port Richey, some of the others as well. Um, I ran, I ran utility billing for several years here and, you know, most of these situations were handled, you know, you know, in-house, you know, for a pool leak or, or something like that where, um, bringing, bringing the bill down to the first tier was really close. When you want to start calculating the delta of our cost, how do you go ahead and factor that? Do you factor that by the, the water that we import from Newport Richey? Or do you factor the amount of workers it takes to, to, to treat the water, pump the water, the technicians out there field that went and read the meter once, twice, verified the meter reading? I mean, what, where do you find all that?
To answer, to answer your question on that, water utility is a business, right? And every business that sells something should know the cost. It's all baked in, right? You factor in what it costs, right? And then you have, you, you mark that up. So if we don't know what our cost of water is, we need to find it out regardless.
Well, that's how we establish the rates. So we do know what our water costs.
Yeah. We had a study done for, you know, to do that. But the thing is that we can, we can, we can do all that, but that's what I'm saying. You have to factor all that in. The chemical treatment, the amount of technicians that takes a, you know, from our water plant to the technicians out the field, the cost for the, for the women inside the utility billing that are handling the case. I mean, there's, there's several factors if you're going to factor that in, or as appeared to bring it down to a, to an adjustment level, you know, coming to an agreement, like you said, when you were, where you found there was just a 50% break on that total cost where that would be more of a, uh, more of a cross the board type of situation to where you're going to have to have them calculate every single case individually. I think if you have a, if you have an across the board type of adjustment policy, that's going to be fair to matter, you know, no matter if it's, you know, outside the county or in the city. So, and I, and, and looking at what the county, you know, like I said, just in my experience, and I don't have those policies in front of me, uh, I know they're not breaking that down to the, to, to the penny of what that's going to be. They're, they're going to give you a general policy. If you exceed a certain amount of gallons in Pasco County, they'll just basically not charge you sewer anymore, but you're going to pay them for water. You know, that's, that's their policy. They break, if you, if you're out irrigating or, or you, you have a break.
It's 10,000 gallons.
Yes. 10,000 gallons is the, is the cutting point. So they'll stop sewer 10,000 gallons, but you're paying for all the water no matter what. And there is no negotiation. It's just, that's it. We'll cut your sewer 10, 10,000, 10,000 gallons, but you're not going to pay, you know, but you're going to pay the water. But we don't have to use that policy. Like I said, we get across the board comparison and go from there. So.
Well, I, I, I think I already told you, I, my best practice for this is there's a, there's a, there's already a policy in place. If you want to, you can do, this board can do whatever it wants in all reality, up to a certain level. You can't just wipe away the water bill. Of course you can't do that, but there's a process in place. I, I say, hey, we don't have a process for, for eliminating except going to the next tier or the bottom, the first tier if you want.
But we don't have any policy.
Well, well, you're right. But if we write a policy in that, but when you start changing things, you're going to have a lot more problems. Listen, I have people calling every day about this and that. I mean, their water bill's $10 more than it used to be. They want credits for this and that. There is a policy here where we, we, uh, appeal it. If this, this fellow's going to come and appeal it to you, it's $1,800. If it's, if you save the last tier, do whatever you want with it at that point. That's the policy. I mean, us, us making a policy where we, we're doing it, you're going to get that all day, every day. Somebody just left their sprinkler on. That happens all the time. I got three today that left their sprinkler on the night before and they want adjustments for it. So like.
Well, that's not, that's not, that's not a leak. It's a, they, they left their water on.
Well, you start, you start, uh, giving people, you know, hey, this guy here, I mean, he didn't leave his water on, but it leaked. I mean, it had nothing to do with me. Yeah. Yeah. I understand what you're, I mean, you know, but there, there's always going to be something. Somebody's going to come in and try to do that whole, whole ordeal. I feel for him. $1,800 is a lot of money. I get it 125%, but the, the policy shouldn't be with us. We have, we have, we have this thing, but come to you. If you want to, if you want to break it down and give him 50% off that 1,800, that's up to the council to do that. And they, that's, that's the, that's the progression of what should happen. Not a new policy, I don't think. Now what we can do is I don't think this is something that we should, you know, uh, deal with tonight, but let us look into it and like you said, get the other policies together and see what works best for us. And we don't want to, we don't want to say, hey, we want to bill you to, you know, our, you know, $5 a gallon is what we pay for plus 50 cent. Um, let's find, figure out whatever else does. And if you want to actually change the policy, then we come and.
That's, that's on my support.
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that. Now, you know me, I, I don't want to give anything away, but.
If I, if I could, an, an end I think is instead of occasionally checking, it doesn't cost us anything to do a pull. We can pull every Monday and Thursday, for example, and then nobody gets a, they, they get notified because we have their email and their phone number because they have a calendar.
Those two, those things.
And then no leak lasts longer than three or four days.
Right. When you pull those, you pull that report, you could have 60 people on there. You, we, obviously I don't go out and my, my girls in there don't go out and check. We send out work orders for people to go check those.
Yeah.
And obviously sometimes that don't happen that day and sometimes it don't happen the next day. Yeah.
It's not, our manpower is limited and everything takes manpower.
But now, yes, we can obviously try to run that report more often and, and things like that. I mean.
Well, it's a smart capability. I, I would hope that they would be able to send an alert to a panel somewhere that says, hey, by parameter that we set up. Again, I don't know. It's something to check into. But we, we've got to get, we've got to get proactive to help folks not be in this situation. And for the people who are in a situation, we need to have some kind of policy together so that it does give staff, uh, something that we don't have to have a bunch of appeals coming through as things like this happen. We put something in place that, that works. It's.
Well, I told you, I have 12 people for you. I, I gave them the lay of the law. They did not want to appeal it. I gave them that option. They're paying. I put them on a payment plan. That's just the, the way it is. But so wipe away water and that's it. I didn't even put them on the first tier. They, they're paying the $3,000 on a payment plan, the whole amount, and then we kind of just go from there. Uh, again, you were talking about equality. That's equality. I, we do want to run, but if you make that policy, I mean, I don't think it's fair. We have those three people or 12 people that's on a payment plan. You're talking about whoever's in an appeal. I'd be highly upset if we made this new policy and you wouldn't go back and do it with those 12 people.
Well, I, and I understand that, but again, policy changes all the time and there's always somebody that, uh, this is the, otherwise you just leave it the same and everybody gets shafted in the end, right? So that's not the, so.
I shaft everybody.
Right. So I'm looking at stopping that and possibly having something.
So yeah, let, let me, let me do a little research. I can do some research, see what everybody else does and how they, how they account for that.
I paid three of those $900,000 bills. My fault once, twice, stuff broke, but I invested in the mowing shut off valve. And I have right now, when that water runs for a certain period of time, there's, you know, and it's abnormal. It tracks you brushing your teeth, washing your dishes, taking a shower. And if it's outside of that there and you don't answer your phone, it shuts your water off. It just shuts off them.
And all this, the technology's there. Again, it's.
It's about three to 400 bucks for this thing. But let me tell you what, the things, that thing's bulletproof and it works and it saved my butt on multiple occasions since I got tired of paying those bills. I said, I'm going to invest this money. So maybe we should, yes ma'am?
Real quick, not really, yeah, go ahead. I mean, it's not really time for public comment, so I thought I'd.
Christine, 7808 Weber Lane, could we put that on the grant program? Um, that program, add it to the grant program so that it could be reimbursed?
Yeah, no.
No, not, could we find a grant program?
It's fixed like.
Where, because it's the people helping the city and the city, helping the people at the same, any kind of grant?
Well, you can do it outside of the CRA. They would be able to order.
Right. But no, there's no other grant.
No, that's, that's why I'm thinking is we look at what our cost is and we can reduce as much as possible.
It's very easy to install.
And also one more thing, um, you could make them prove, proof of repair, that a repair was made so that.
Hundred percent. That would definitely be part of it.
It would be something like a sprinkler running nonstop or whatever. There had to be at least.
Exactly. So staff, you could think about how we can do that. And like I said, honestly, as appeals come in, bring them forth, we can take those on one offs. But, uh, also we need to solidify something going forward. Um, any objections to that? Okay, thanks. Just to reiterate on the board of adjustment, there's been some issues with folks responding. We have a quorum. Uh, so we, we put Christine on there to help out with that. I think we may be okay with the next meeting, but I've just employed the board of adjustment folks that, uh, when you get an email about a meeting request or whatever, please make sure you respond to it. If, if it comes to fact, we can't get ahold of you, we have to send police cars out and try to find you, uh, we're going to remove you from the board. And it's going to be once. We need people that can, to show up and answer. And either you can't make it remain, that's fine. Just let us know. As soon as she reaches out within a day or two, check your email, say, hey, we can't make it for this. And then we try another day. But you, you've got to be responsive. If you aren't responding, we're going to have to kick you off the board. And I, I don't want to do that. So please make sure you're responsive with our clerk. Um, Christine had also sent in the thing. I know staff had kind of looked at it, talked about our non substantial damage permit process. And if we could do a more streamlined process, uh, have we done anything?
Yeah, we, we actually spoke with the city that she had given us an example and, uh, I think AI, uh, was, gave us some information because we cut, talked to the director of the department. And, uh, Sal, do you remember being in on that call?
No.
Veronica's not here.
Veronica, I know Veronica was reaching out to me.
Well, I know that portion of it, but again, I think the, the ask about having some, uh, not fast track process per se, but just a streamlined process, if you will, that somebody's deemed not substantially damaged, that we, we do everything we can to, to move that along without, uh, a lot of, uh, red tape. So, um, I think there's, you know, maybe not to that extreme. Obviously, and again, I don't know if that's, they don't do it, but that's something possible. But if we could really look at how we can make that streamlined process for those folks so they don't, uh, they don't have to be caught up in a lot of government red tape trying to get back into homes. That's, that's the goal. So.
Same with.
Any objections to that? Okay. Um, the, uh, two more things very quickly. The, we talked about the Grand Boulevard, um, planning group. There's a, the, uh, CIA proposal came in. I don't, did you send that to everybody or?
The what?
The CIA proposal?
GAI.
Uh, GAI, I'm sorry. Can't read my writing.
I don't know if I did.
Okay. So I think I got $51,000 roughly to, to do what the design.
I believe that's what we were talking about. That.
Yeah.
There's no contract. Like if you go, I believe it's going to be a piggyback.
It's, it's, her proposal was based on a piggyback.
We need to get all, I need to get all that information before you guys do anything else. I need to look at the piggyback and make sure everything was done properly. And then if you guys want to move forward, we need to get a contract.
That's why I was told, uh, I was brought it up there a couple of hours ago and Nancy was giving me the eyeball. So that's why I kind of.
Okay. Well, so.
It was premature to talk about it.
Just, is there any objections to her getting that information, looking at it? And we bring that, I, I was, we talked about Grand Boulevard. I think that would, we need to get started in planning. Um, this would be relatively inexpensive to do. We could, we could use CRA dollars to do it. Um, and, uh, it's, like I said, relatively expensive if everything works out and we can get a nice product. I don't have it in there, but it's a nice, um, do you have it? A chance?
Similar to.
Be something like this. This is what they did for City Claremont. And it goes through about the plan. It kind of shows the areas and, and, uh, you know, it's, it's a nice product and.
Kind of a roof map.
And then it gives us something to, to go make decisions on as we look to, to do something in that area. So any objections to that? Moving on. Okay. And then finally, I don't know what other cities do or whatever, but, uh, to be honest, I'm, it's, it's, it's a burden for me when I come over here, even to use the restroom back here or to get in, ring the bell. Sometimes folks ain't there. Is there any way that's that, that, uh, access files could be given to the elected officials? So we can get, I mean, obviously there's, there's reasons we, we don't interact with staff or whatever, but, um, there's, I have less access than everybody in a building. Uh, it's, 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 it's irritating. I shouldn't have to ask staff to let me into the bathroom, uh, for, if I have a meeting with city manager, I shouldn't have to, you know, ring the bell and hope somebody's there. Again, nothing against staff. It's just a, it's just something that shouldn't have to go on, I think. Um, and obviously there's, if the city manager's aware of any abuse where somebody's going in and go and sit down, Ronnie thought, that's, that's not what it's for. But I, I think that there's, there's, there's certain access we should be able to have. So that, uh, we don't have to burden staff to get up out of their desk to say, hell, hey, we need to get here to see the city manager or we need to go to the bathroom. And, I mean, we have that out there, but there's, sometimes that's, that's whack.
It obviously precedes my time here. So I don't know of any legal reason. I think I can speculate. It's more to, the, the staff might be like, oh my God, it's one of the councilmen and, or it's the mayor and drop everything and.
Right.
And feel directed or something like that. So, but I can just, uh, I mean, I, directors, uh, I would just tell them, hey, reiterate to yourselves and the staff, you know, so councilman comes in.
Right.
Mayor comes in, mayor, good to see you. Good morning. And if anything anybody says feels like I'm getting conflicting guidance or something.
Yeah. We have rules as council people to follow. And whether we have a key file or not, allows us in the door or not, we have those rules to follow. But, uh, again, I don't know why we're the, we have such restrictions on, on access to the building. Um, it's just, it's, it actually takes time. I had to get ahold, you had to talk to staff to let you in. So is there any objections to looking into possibly doing that? Are you guys totally against that idea or?
No, probably okay with it.
It seems silly to me, but.
So if you want to dock your pay for the cost of the bottom.
I mean, we are the elected officials, right?
It, it is very odd. I said, the mayor has to ask somebody to let him in the bathroom back here. It's just annoying to me. And, and I do it all, be honest with you, maybe you guys don't, but I'm up here a lot for different things or whatever, different meetings and meet residents or whatever. And, and, uh, you know, I just, I always have to ring the bell and sometimes folks are on lunch or whatever. And it's, it's, you know, it's, it's silly. It's just really a silly. I mean, that.
I don't even think it's a written policy. It just, it just, they threw me a file when I got here and they said, don't let the mayor borrow it.
We're the whole neighborhood.
He should have got Matt's when he left.
Yeah. We are literally the most restrictive people here and we make all the policy decisions on this. It's just weird to me.
May have been to keep things separate, sunshine. I'm not sure, but, uh, I think we can work with that.
It's like, it's not like they're not going to let us in. So why burden with that to, you know? But again, with that, with that comes responsibility. Don't abuse it, please. So, and that's, oh, do you have something, Sam?
I just, um, I, this is a precedence. So I would think we should probably investigate it before we go ahead and go forward with it.
True. Absolutely.
So I mean, just, I think that we should just go across the board, um, you know, and do a comparison with other cities and stuff like that and see what that policy is. Because I, there is, there is the, the idea of full-time employee access. There's of course, there's police C J S access. There's liability access of being in the back, you know, because you're not full-time employees and have that liability coverage, you know? So I, there are, there are certain reasons.
Check in with what.
And I, I just, I think on a liability, you know, thing, we should just verify that before moving forward. Just, just to make sure.
And that's all I'm asking. If council, if council, if council is okay with looking into that, hopefully we can do something. If not, we'll, we'll, we'll address it. Okay. And that's all I had for.
I have one thing. I'm sorry. I know. Really quick.
Bob is going to be very.
I know Bob, I'm sorry. Real quick. Um, after the appeals, the demolition, um, appeals that you guys had at the last meeting, whenever we, we had that last, um, what came to light was, um, the code doesn't anticipate an official like determination letter going to that person. It, it doesn't talk about that. We did that or we're doing it. I don't think they've been mailed out yet. Um, I think for the building officials file, the city's file and that person's file, it is, it's important for them to have something official that says your appeal was denied, your appeal was granted, um, your, it's been told for the 30 days like you did on a couple of them. So that's in writing. As you know, we come back sometimes months later, what happened on such and such, and no one remembers because there's nothing written about it. Um, especially the ones that are told. I think that's really important. I think that what the code envisions is that the, that order gets sent out. If they appeal it and they lose, that order is filed with circuit court and then it's official final. That's great. And that's still going to happen if you deny someone's appeal. But if you grant it or toll it, there's nothing to document it other than the minutes and, and, and the video, um, from the, the proceedings. So I would like permission from you to modify your code to allow for determination letters to be sent. And the other thing that has changed, um, which is relatively new, um, the building department has created an application for them to fill out because your code says that the appeal has to be in writing, but it doesn't say how. So it comes in all shapes and sizes. And they even got one, I think from Newport, on Newport Richey paperwork. So they've created their own. And so I think the code should also say written, written appeal as provided by the building department. And then also put the determination letters in there to make that part of our policy.
And I'm glad you brought that up. And is there any objections to that?
No, there's a way we can make that a digital form and the whole thing we talked.
I believe it is.
Yeah. And I, and I want to add something to that. I'm glad you brought this up. The, um, because obviously the, what the process would be now is that's been determination, determined. And so the next thing that comes to council to approve the, the demolition bid, to approve the cost of it, right? Um, is there, because we, we've, we determined that it's coming down. Can we, can we give the, the property owner, the property owner the ability to fulfill that? So we don't have to pay for it and lien the property.
I know they do.
Did, did they normally give them like 30?
They give them 30 days. They give three. I'll make sure the code says that.
Yeah. Let's, we'll make sure that's, uh, and that, that way it happens on their timeframe and then they can give whatever they want out of there.
I know in this case.
We don't have to pay for it upfront and lien it and.
I know in this case, the building official did give for 30 days. That would.
Well, well, to that, to that end, if they're supposed to demo it, right?
Well, that's, that's our process to demo it.
Right.
Well, is it our process or ultimately if, if it's their building, we're told them that, hey, you're going to have to demo it. Do they pay and demo it or do we?
It's a, it's a forced action.
If they, right. So if they don't, they get a timeframe, 30 days. And if they don't, then the city will.
But are they aware of that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
That's in, it's in the code. It's in the code and the, and the order that they get that says you, this structure's been deemed.
And they've been handed this letter or whatever.
And these letters that we decided were a good idea that hadn't been done in the past, we can tell, would also state that again.
For the one that was denied and it's fine to hold that she had the.
They have the option of going out, bidding that out to get a better price than what we might.